All right, I'll call this meeting to order at 6:02. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a quick round of introductions.
Rachel Anderson, Jennifer Gill.
Richard Bremmels.
Peter Crusoe, Town Administrator.
Joseph Baker.
All right, let's roll right in here. Joint meeting with FinCom and Capital Program Committee, if a quorum. Do we have a quorum?
We do have a quorum for the Capital Program Committee, so we're opening the meeting and joining yours. Thank you.
Perfect. We have a quorum for FinCom. Do you guys want to take?
Not yet.
No? Not yet? We're still waiting?
Yeah.
So what do we think? You want to take something out of order here, Peter?
So you can do it either way. You can do the warrant first or the budget. Your call.
Dive right into the warrant.
Okay.
What can I do?
Yep. So if you allow the Capital Committee to vote on the warrant articles where they're supposed to weigh in, which is for capital items as well as use to stabilization, what I'll do is I'll call for a motion and a second, and we'll deliberate if any, and then vote, and that'll be before the board votes on these things. How's that sound?
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question, because shouldn't we go through the budget before we vote on the warrant article for the budget?
You might go back to that, so however you want to do it.
Well, it's just because they're missing a member.
Yeah, no, no, that's okay.
So what do we want to do?
So we have...
Well, we can vote on all the other warrant articles and do that one last.
So Article 1 is the monetary increases, right? That's the standard article. FinCom was 4-0 on that one. Capital doesn't weigh in on that. Basically, it asks people to, if they make a motion on Town Meeting Floor to change a budget item, they would have to identify the funding source for that change.
So do you want us to kind of go through the ones now, and then we see a capital planning item?
Yeah, so I'll stop you at the capital planning ones, right?
Fair enough.
But you can, you know, the selectmen can weigh in on recommending or not each of the items.
All right, so you want me to read each article, and then?
That's your call.
Go back.
You know, they did that at the public hearing the other night, read each one, and the explanations. So folks, if they paid attention, would be conversant on this.
Let's dive right into it. Article 1, Monetary Increases. To see if the town will vote to authorize any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as recommended by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash or the line item article or funding source that will be reduced by the same amount or take any other action in relation thereto submitted by Finance Committee. So this article requires any individual making or amending a motion which will increase any budget line item that has not been recommended by the Finance Committee must also provide the source of funding for said increase. Comments?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Take a vote?
Aye.
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 Am I?
Aye.
All right. Moving on. Article 2, Bills of Prior Fiscal Year. To see if the town will vote pursuant to GL Chapter 44, subsection 64, to raise an appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money necessary for the purpose of paying outstanding bills from prior fiscal years and/or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the Town Accountant. Explanation, the article seeks town meeting authorization to pay prior year's bills, which is required to MGL Chapter 44, subsection 64. At the time of this writing, there are two outstanding bills, one for fiscal year 24, water operation services from McClure Engineering, invoice 20164 dated 8/5/24 in the amount of $8,775, and another in fiscal year 24, highway repairs from Milton Cat, invoice 8012862, dated 2/7/24 for $5,942.52. Funding to come from fee cash, and the passage requires four-fifth majority. So?
Isn't August 24th this fiscal year?
It's this fiscal year.
Yeah.
That's the bill date, but the service was rendered.
It's prior.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if I recall, that the Milton Cat was February of March of...
I'm talking about the McClure Engineering, because it's dated August.
They were late getting their bills, and that's why it's a prior year bill. They got it in after the books were closed.
Okay, okay, sounds good. So I'll make a motion to approve Article 2?
Second.
Take a vote?
Aye.
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 We don't expect any others to pop up?
We know of no others.
Okay.
And don't worry, I'll switch it up. I won't always call on you first.
Oh.
All right, Article 3, Snow and Ice Deficit. Well, we had a lot this year. To see if the town will vote to transfer an appropriate sum of monies from the free cash or available funds to fund deficits incurred with the snow ice budget per MGL Chapter 44, section 31D, or take any other action in relation thereto submitted by Finance Committee and the Highway Surveyor, that's me. Explanation, this article seeks to transfer from free cash or available funds, including general stabilization funds, in order to pay the deficit in the snow and ice account, which can be lawfully overspent pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, section 31D. At the time of this printing, the amount is $127,420.
So before you take a vote, Capital would want to take a vote, because we're recommending that this be funded out of general stabilization, not free cash. So I'd be looking for a motion from...
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to approve Article 3, Snow and Ice Deficit, in the sum of $127,420.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, Helges was here, but...
Perfect.
Yep, thank you.
And then it's up to us now, take a motion?
So what's the rationale behind using, having it come from general stabilization instead of free cash?
So the free cash amount is sufficient to cover the deficit, but not sufficient to cover this. This is, you know, seemed advisable to use stabilization to do this rather than the free cash. It was an unusual winter, and so that's the justification.
Can you make thoughts on that, Andrew? Is that...
No, I was just wondering what the reasoning, that's all.
Okay, because I kind of like it, but if you don't like it, I have another opinion, I'd be interested in it.
No, no, I was just wondering, because usually it's done that way, that's why I was just wondering.
So I'll make a motion to approve Article 3 and suggest funding this article from general stabilization. Do we recommend the funding source as well?
You might as well, because I'm going to change the description to say that it's coming from stabilization.
Okay.
Okay.
The Finance Committee vote to take this from free cash?
No, I thought you voted to take it from stabilization.
Peter told me, I didn't watch the meeting yet, but Peter already said it.
Right, the explanation is both in there.
If you voted to approve it.
You tell us. I thought that's what you wound up doing, because you weren't doing the...
General stabilization.
Yes, from general stabilization, that's correct.
Doesn't the article say to take it from either source?
But if we had free cash, we were going to take it from free cash.
So we'll leave it as or, but you don't have free cash to cover the full deficit and the prior year bills and this, right?
So I think we should, I think...
So did we vote with an open?
I don't remember what you did.
So if I read this, the explanation says seeks to transfer from free cash or other available funds, including the general stabilization funds, so isn't that...
That covers it, so I would, so I guess the way I would look at it, but in terms of our vote, we're voting for Capital at use of stabilization. That will be final when the motion is made at Town Meeting Floor.
Okay.
Right? I think that's where that comes in. So our vote's still good.
So we'll keep it as either or until a week from today, and then we'll say general stabilization.
Yep. But I won't change the explanation.
Is it okay for the Board of Selectmen still to recommend stabilization?
Absolutely, in my view.
So I won't change my motion, then?
So you made a motion, we need a second. Do you want me to second it?
Oh, I thought you, okay, yeah, second. I thought you said you seconded, that's nice.
We'll start with Joe. Aye. I'm an aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, there we go.
And could I just clarify for you guys, when you're saying, "Vote for," you're really recommending, that's what we're talking about?
Yes.
Fair enough. Moving on, Article 4, Highway Department, Chapter 90. To see if the town will vote to accept and expend such sum or sums of money allotted to be allotted to town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of MGL Chapter 90 or render any other state roadway reimbursement programs for fiscal year 2025 and/or authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division for such purposes, and further to authorize a treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow in anticipation of 100% reimbursement of said amounts or to take any other action relative thereto. So this is an annual article which allows the town to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer funds in anticipation of reimbursement revenues from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for road repair assistance under MGL Chapter 90. Said funds do not exceed the town's portion. So, Peter, where does this money come from? Is it kind of sitting in like Limbo Land?
So we would, in other words, if all you had was FY26's allocation of Chapter 90 funds, right? And we think that's 183 grand, thereabouts. And the money wasn't in the bank yet, we hadn't received it yet. This allows the town to spend in advance of that, basically out of the general fund.
Out of the general fund, okay.
And then it's replenished by way of the money coming in.
All right, anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second it. Uh, Joe?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Jen?
Aye.
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 All right, okay. Moving on. Article 5, Cable License Fees. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the PEG account and cable-related funds account the sum of $7,500, $7,500, to forward to the Superintendent of Schools of Blackstone Millville Regional School District for use by the Director of Library and Media Services to enhance the curriculum offerings that are available in the school district, or take any other action in relation thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Cable Advisory Committee. Explanation, this is an annual article which allows the town to forward a certain sum of money from fees collected pursuant to the town's cable franchise license agreement with Charter Communications to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. Similar arrangement exists with the town of Blackstone as well.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 5 as written.
Second.
Take a vote, Joe?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Jen?
Aye.
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 All right. Article 6, Highway and Bridge Stabilization Fund. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds a sum of money to the Highway and Bridge Stabilization Fund or to take any action relative thereto submitted by the Highway Surveyor and Board of Selectmen. The article allows for future strategic funding of roadway and bridge projects, which have previously been funded out of the operational budget and as part of the town's continuing goal to manage a capital plan and in order to address the numerous roadway and bridge capital improvement projects and equipment which exceed the operating budget. The plan for this year's town meeting is to take no action on this article. So I guess we would be recommending to take no action?
That's correct, so as Capital, I'd ask for a motion to take no action, recommend taking no action.
So I'll make a motion to recommend Article 6 and take no action.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion that we recommend to take no action on Article 6.
I'll second it. Andrew? Do you want to vote, or?
Oh, um...
I know I'm mixing things up here, I'm kind of going backwards.
Yeah, no, no, so...
Being spontaneous.
We're voting to not recommend, or just take no action?
We recommend to take no action, is how I worded the motion. If that's uncomfortable, or maybe we can amend it.
So I'm just trying, so it's still going to be on the warrant?
Yes.
What will the vote show, then, if we're not taking any action to just...
I don't think we will vote, right? We just said we'd take no action, then we don't vote on it.
So then you get to where the motion will be to take no action at Town Meeting Floor.
Is there any reason why we're not taking any action?
Because we have no money to put into the stabilization account.
Okay, well, even, you could have still create the account, even if you don't fund it necessarily.
We have the account. The account was created last year. I think it has 100...
127.
Thank you, 127.
Okay.
So we'll take a vote?
Yep. Aye.
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 I'm aye, Joe?
Aye.
There we have it, okay. Article 7, Capital Stabilization Fund. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds a sum of money to the Capital Stabilization Fund or take any other action relative thereto submitted by Finance Committee and the Town Administrator. This article allows for future strategic funding of capital projects which have previously been funded out of the operational budget and as part of the town's and its Capital Program Committee's continuing goal to manage a capital plan in order to address the numerous capital improvements, projects, and equipment which exceed the operating budget. The plan for this year's ATM is to take no action on this account, as is already well-funded.
So Capital would take a motion to recommend taking no action on this article?
So moved.
So I'll make a...
Second?
Oh, second.
I beat you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All good, thank you, 5-0.
Make a motion to take no action on Article 7?
Second.
Take a vote, Andrew?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All right. We're killing it here, this is awesome. Article 8.
Lots of agreement.
General Stabilization Fund. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds a sum of money to be placed in the General Stabilization Fund or take any action in relation thereto submitted by the Town Administrator and Finance Committee. This article, the annual article, allows for transferring funds in the Stabilization Fund as part of the town's ongoing goal to build the town's financial reserves. The Stabilization Fund is a reserve fund which can be used for catastrophic or emergency events or when revenue sources are below prior year's levels. A majority vote of town meeting voters is required to appropriate funds into the Stabilization Fund. The plan for this year's ATM at the time of this writing is to take no action on this article.
So for Capital, I'll take a motion to recommend taking no action?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, 5-0, thank you.
Comments, questions, complaints?
Make a motion to take no action on Article 8?
Second.
Take a vote, Andrew?
Aye.
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 Aye, Joe?
Aye.
All right. Article 9, Fund Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds a sum of money to the OPEB Liability Trust Fund for the purpose of reducing the unfunded actuarial liability of healthcare and other post-employment benefits of retired employees or take any other action in relation thereto submitted by the Town Administrator and Finance Committee. So this article authorized the town to partially fund FY26 in existing OPEB Liability Trust Fund to address the town's unfunded liability for employee retirement benefits. The liability as of June 30th, 2023 is approximately $241,593, and the trust fund had a balance of approximately $194,305. If the account is not funded, the town's financial statement may be negatively impacted, possibly affecting the town's bond rating and future ability to borrow. In addition, absent funding, future taxpayers will suffer the cost burden of OPEB liabilities being created from employees' services currently enjoyed by today's taxpayers. The plan for this year's ATM is to take no action as the OPEB funding is believed to be sufficient at this time. That's a mouthful.
It is, you're doing a good job reading these, though.
We're trying, we're killing it.
Good job.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 9?
I'll second.
All right.
We're just taking no action?
Taking no action?
Recommend and take no action.
Oh, sorry, I make a motion, sorry, I'll re-amend my motion, sorry. I will make a motion to recommend taking no action on Article 9?
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye, and Joe?
Aye.
All right. Moving on.
Want to circle back to 10, do you think?
Do you want to skip it?
Yeah, because I think we should, I want to review the budget, shouldn't we review it?
Yeah, that would make sense.
Yes, I think so, too.
So you get through the rest of these, and then you come back to the...
Yes.
All the small numbers?
I don't know if I can take the suspense, Peter. The suspense is killing me.
You do it however you want, but that's just a thought.
All right, moving on, we'll go to Article 11. BMR, Other Post-Employment Benefits. To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $24,650 in the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, OPEB fund, of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District established under General Law's Chapter 32B, Section 20. Said funds to be used only to pay some portion of health benefits retirees from the Blackstone Millville Regional School District or take any other action relative thereto submitted by Blackstone Millville Regional School District. So this article provides for a direct contribution by each town to make a funding contribution to BMR's nearly $33 million unfunded liability for health and other retirement benefits, retiree benefits, earned already by BMR employees but not yet funded. This liability is in addition to other defined BMR employee retirement obligations, approximately $7 million to non-teachers directly payable by BMR, and approximately $32 million for BMR teachers under the Mass Teacher Retirement System paid through state taxes. This article may not be necessary if the Omnibus Budget Article 10 passes, which includes $24,650 in funding from Millville's share of the $100,000 contribution to the BMR OPEB Trust Fund. Say that 10 times fast.
There you go, but that's the critical point. It's already included in the BMR budget in all these numbers. If that passes in Article 10 by the voters, then no action is needed to be taken. But if it doesn't pass, then you're recommending taking this action, so... So it's if needed. Follow me?
Yep, I'll make a recommendation to, I'll make a motion to recommend Article 11?
Second.
Take a vote, Andrew?
Aye.
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 I'm aye, Joe?
Aye.
All right. That's only if needed.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Article 12, one of our favorite stipends, BMR School Committee Stipends. See if the town will vote to authorize members of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee to be compensated for their services as such members and to set the amount of said compensation to $1,500 per member and $1,800 for the chairman, such compensation to be paid in three equal installments in the months of July, November, and March, provided, however, that no such installment shall be paid to a member who is not in attendance at least 60% of the meetings of the school district committee, excluding, however, any meetings not attended by any such members due to provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, in the 12-month period prior to July 1st, November 1st, or March 1st, as the case may be, if such a member has been a member for 12 months or more months prior to each of said dates, or b, to a member who has not attended at least 60% of the meetings of the district school committee, excluding, however, any meetings not attended by such members due to provisions of Mass General Law, 268A, in the period prior to each of said dates, or take any other action in relation thereto submitted by the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. This article seeks to accept the compensation as defined to be provided to members of the Regional School District Committee.
Make a motion to not approve?
Not recommend.
Not recommend.
Second.
Take a vote, Andrew?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
So we are not recommending this?
So you're 0-5?
Yep.
You're 0-5?
I have a question about this.
Yeah.
So last week, when the Finance Committee voted about this, somebody mentioned that it doesn't matter anyways, because it's already built into the budget. Why are we, why did we even have this article in the first place?
So the town has gone back and forth with BMR School District regarding the need for this article. Council for the town believes it's unnecessary, because we have it in the budget already. But that said, they do have the same article over in Blackstone, so the preference was to have both communities address this this way.
Why is it even built into the budget like that? Like, shouldn't that be its own separate item? So that this vote actually does something?
That's water under the bridge and over the dam, I think, in terms of where, you know?
Um, so I agree with you, Rachel, but we've done it. I don't honestly know why we do it this way.
It's the way it's been done, I guess.
Yes, the way it's been done, and we have not rocked the boat on that. What we have done is not recommended this, because we're $312,000.
But aren't we still going to pay it in the end?
No.
No?
Not if we, if this doesn't pass, they don't get paid, and they get their $6,000.
It gets in the budget.
So they do get paid either way?
No, if that, that's at a previous town meeting, Jane Reggio had said that if this article does not get approved, that $6,000 goes back into the available budget for the school district, and they're able to use, it's fun, it will fund something else for the school, but will not fund a stipend.
Who said that?
Jane Reggio.
Okay. I mean, the lawyers have already said that it's in the, both legal.
So I think maybe we could get clarification on that, and we can, if we want to amend the school budget on the floor, we can certainly do that.
Historically, the voters have approved this warrant article?
Yes.
Even though, in spite of a Finance Committee position and a Board of Selectmen position, the voters approved it historically.
But historically, we've been able to afford it, so...
We've actually never really been able to afford it, and no one gets stipends except for the BMR School Committee and the BBT School Rep. No one else gets them. That is really true, Jerry.
No, that isn't.
Yes, it is. So where...
But indeed, the idea of this is that the legal advice on this, because this has been going on for three or four years, legal advice on this is that they said it's baked into the budget to begin with, the BMR budget. It's in there. Legal advice was that they said, both lawyers agreed, ours from this town and theirs from Blackstone, said, "Let's put it in and have the people vote it." You have the right to vote anywhere you want, but it's still in the budget. Now, you could, as Jen said, I think you're right on this. I think you could amend it on the floor to reduce the school budget by that amount, if you chose to do that, okay? And see if you could get that, so you could take it out and then have them reset their whole budget over again, over $6,000 on $31 million. That's your prerogative, if you wish to do that. But that's the way it kind of works, okay? So it's been approved by both towns' lawyers, and we have to put it in.
I think we can ask also to see if what I was, what was stated at a previous town meeting is accurate. So if this doesn't pass, will they get paid or not? Yeah.
All right, Article 13, Cable Appropriations. See if the town will vote to appropriate $37,500 from the PEG Access and Cable Fund available fund balance to fund the cable operation for fiscal year 2025.
26, sorry.
Wow, ooh, typo, okay. Don't want it to happen again. Starting July 21st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026, under the direction of the Cable Coordinator, said funds to be spent on professional wages in the amount of $20,000, part-time wages $2,500, and expenses $15,000. Submitted by the Town Accountant and Cable Advisory Committee. This article appropriates sufficient amounts of fund, or sufficient amounts to fund the operations of the Cable Coordinator and team from funds collected in the PEG Access and Cable Fund pursuant to the town's cable franchise license agreement with Charter Communications.
Motion to approve, recommend?
I'll second. Take a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye?
Aye.
There we go. Article fourteen, change highway surveyor from elected to appointed. To see if the town will vote pursuant to uh general law, chapter forty-one, subsection one B to have its elected highway surveyor become an appointed. Highway surveyor or take any action relative thereto. This article seeks to adopt current municipal best practices and apply them to the currently elected highway surveyor role. That's me. As explained in the Division of Local Services, DLS website, municipal positions. Continue to grow in responsibility requires skill sets such that communities are turning to appointed positions to attract a wider pool. Of candidates with strong credentials and relative uh relevant professional experience. Converting elected role also provides the opportunity to define job requirements and reporting structure. Specify clear expectation of the position and its relationship with management and other team members. In addition, positions such as this require extensive knowledge and are essential providing a community's critical operations and services. Subject to voter approval uh of a ballot question at the town's next election, this change will go into effect after the current incumbent's term expires. So so Peter, does that mean that this still has to be added to a ballot?
Yes, so what happens is at the next annual election, right? You'll have two things going on. One is election of the highway surveyor. And two, the ballot question. If the ballot question passes. Then the board of selectmen, then the highway survey, the elected highway surveyor. Is in the position until such time the board of selectmen appoint an appointed highway surveyor.
Until the term expires that he was elected to or she was elected to, correct?
The so so let's say John Doe runs for highway surveyor a year from now because. Yes, so you still have an have an election for that position. But you also have a ballot question to address this, and if the ballot question passes, then the board of selectmen. Appoint a new person. Whenever they choose to. And the elected person is really in a holdover status until that appointment. That's what I've got from council.
Okay.
Why does it say? Yeah, effective after the current incumbent's term expires.
Yeah, that's kind of.
Subject to voter approval. So the last line is really the qualifier for all of that.
Yeah, it is kind of strange.
It is. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
So, yeah.
We have a question in the back?
Yeah, a question. Um, is there any provision for advertising the position and taking? Because usually that kind of thing takes a while. Should should.
And isn't it saying the current incumbent is as of today or as of the vote?
Yeah, so.
As of when we vote.
We can refine the wording, I suppose. I mean.
When does, because you're the, when does your term expire? Is it?
Twenty twenty-six.
So it's a year?
One year.
He's one, a one year.
Oh, it's one year all the time?
No, no, it's not all the time.
It's a three-year term. He's filling the balance of a. Right? He was elected to fill the balance of a three-year, existing three-year.
So that means you're gonna have one more election, but. But if the people vote, if this is supported. And then they vote at the ballot, does that make that?
Then then the board of selectmen get to appoint a person and the person elected. Is there in holdover status, but only until the board of selectmen appoint someone.
That's, I thought we talked. Yeah.
That's what I have from Brian Riley.
I don't understand how you can be elected for a position and fill it.
And then someone, and then we have two of them.
Right.
Like, because we could appoint someone.
So they're only serving until you appoint someone to the position.
How would this, because the swearing in in the term of the elected official is three years, so how is that?
Because of the ballot question, I think, the ballot question drives. That piece of it from what I recall reading from council.
So the ballot question is gonna be changed?
Oh, you have, you will have a ballot question to change. From appointed to uh from elected to appoint.
No, my point is you have the question and then you have the separate election of the highway surveyor. So the highway surveyor. Right, exactly.
He he goes up, he's out of luck.
But 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 if he wins an election for three years.
But.
Just kidding, you're here for like a week?
Yes.
You're fired?
Yes.
I don't understand how that works.
That's a, I think.
I'll share that stuff from council with you. I'll refine the, like, maybe I can refine the wording, because.
Because I think that they would finish their term.
No.
And then, no?
No. No.
Well, there wouldn't be.
It says term expires, though, so how is that have any factor into it?
Yeah. Wait, so when they get elected next year, their term expires.
You're gonna get a slight.
So the term expires.
That would be three years from when they're elected. If it's not, if it's a week after they're elected, we then take a vote to replace the person. It's not, their term hasn't expired, so then either there's. Would they still be even on office at that? Because they're sworn in and they can't, and we can't remove an elected official. So.
Yeah, I don't know. It's weird.
That's weird, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think what's, maybe what's important for this, though, is like, do we want to move from elected to appointed? And I think that we do.
Right.
So we can recommend the article, just maybe get clarification on its implementation.
Yeah.
Because the implementation is sketchy.
So let me, well, let me just read to you.
Okay.
Direct from Bri- Brian Riley's citation of section one B of whatever. Chapter he's talking about, forty-one, section one B. That any elect, any individual elected to an officer board. Which becomes an appointed officer board at the same election. Which is what we're talking about. Under the provisions of this section one B, shall hold said office and perform the duties thereof. Until the appointment to said office is otherwise made under the provisions of this section. Now talk about circular.
Yeah.
Stuff. That's, that's what it is.
Okay.
I don't write these laws.
That could be an election of.
It might make sense if you wrote them. We don't want anything crazy.
I think he apologized when he cited that.
I know.
He said, sorry.
Sorry, this is what it says. I know.
Yeah, because that's still a little. Unclear, though.
Yes.
Because it's, you know, it's not really referring to anything.
Could you change the term line? For three months?
Well, I was wondering that.
No, that's a, you know, that's, you're really changing bylaws and, you know, the elections and stuff that. That complicates it even more, I think.
But but suggest that's possible.
So I guess the question is, is would I abstain from that vote or recommending a motion?
I I would advise you to.
Maybe to be safe.
Yes.
Probably be safe, yeah.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to recommend Article fourteen.
Second?
Take a vote. Andrew?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
Aye.
So four, zero, one.
Yep.
Fair enough.
Four, one, zero. The upstains are in, are in the middle.
Really? I thought that they were last because it's yes, no, abstain?
It's in the middle.
Learn something every day.
I know. I thought they were at the end, too.
Alright, uh Article fifteen, a very similar article, change tree warden from elected to appointed. To see if the town will vote pursuant to general law, chapter forty-one, subsection one B to have its elected tree warden become an appointment. Sorry, an appointed tree warden or take any action uh relative thereto. Uh like above, this article seeks to adopt current municipal best practices and apply them to the currently elected tree warden role. As explained on the Division of Local Services, DLS website, municipal uh position continue to grow in responsibility. And required uh skill sets such that communities are turning to appointed positions. To attract a wider pool of candidates with strong credentials and relevant professional experience. Converting an elected role uh also provides the opportunity to define job requirements. And reporting structures specify clear expectations of the position and its relationship with management and other team members. In addition. Positions such as this require extensive knowledge and are essential providing uh a community's critical operations and services. Subject to voter approval of a ballot question, the the town's next annual election, this change will go into effect after the current incumbent's term expires. Sounds very similar. I believe the tree, I thought the tree warden was.
Tree warden is three years. I don't know. I think he's in a two-year cycle, right?
He he was appointed for one year because we missed an election and we had no, no candidates, right? So now he's remaining two years.
Right.
Make a motion to recommend Article fifteen.
Second.
Andrew?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Aye.
An aye. Joe?
Aye.
Alright. Carrying on. Article sixteen, change fire chief from strong chief. Uh to see if the town would vote to rescind the vote taken under Article twenty-one of the February eighth nineteen seventy-one annual town meeting, accepting the provisions. Of GL, chapter forty-eight, subsection forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four, the so-called strong fire chief statute. Uh and further to accept the provisions of uh general law, chapter forty-eight and subsection forty-two A. Or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the board of selectmen. Uh this article rescinds the town's prior adoption of the strong fire chief statute, which principally allows the fire chief. Full appointing authority over all departmental hires. The statute does require the fire chief obtain approval from the board of selectmen prior to any changes in personnel compensation. Uh departmental budgets are also currently subject to voter appropriation regardless of the statute. The only real change is to place authority for appointment of personnel to the board of selectmen. As is currently the uh case with appointments of police as well as most other, most other town personnel. So. I'm I'm gonna chime in on this one here. What's interesting is is um there's some legislation on this and it seems as though. The chief has the ability to, I guess, hire and appoint and promote, but does not have the authority to negotiate. So the salary negotiation happens here, but the appointment happens with the fire chief. That's my understanding of the current statute. So you can wake up one day and all of a sudden have a captain or lieutenant colonel or whatever ranks they have. And then be on the hook to try to negotiate a pay after the fact. So I'm kind of supporting this one.
I also like that they um, because when the, we hire a new police officer, chief clue comes with them and we get to meet them. And ask them a few questions. And we don't do that with the fire department and I think the community would like that visibility.
Yep.
Yeah, creates a more coherent management structure as well, because then you don't have multiple pieces doing different things and strategies.
I think we're the only town with the most officers and not enough firefighters ever. I think in the state. We have more officers. It's crazy.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article sixteen.
Second.
Take a vote. Andrew?
Aye.
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 I'm aye. Joe?
Aye.
Alright. Article seventeen, approval of state audit of ambulance services. See if the town will vote uh pursuant to general law, chapter eleven, and subsection twelve, to raise and appropriate. Or transfer from available funds a sum of money for an audit of the town's ambulance services. By the office of the state auditor or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the board of selectmen. This article provides authority for the town to engage the state auditor's office to perform an audit of transactions related to the proper recognition and validity. Of revenues and expenses of Millville's ambulance service operations, including ALS and other mutual aid, support, and charges. The motion at town meeting will include a not-to-exceed cost of ten thousand as well as a funding source identified from free cash. Or either general stabilization or public safety stabilization funds.
So for capital, what, I I'm gonna take a motion and then have a little discussion, okay? And the motion I'm gonna ask for is to recommend the use of a stabilization fund. If this uh article is approved by the voters. Okay, so that's the motion I'm looking for.
Why don't we make it general stabilization?
What's that?
Why don't we be specific and make it general stabilization? We have over one point one million dollars in there. Ten thousand dollars is.
O- okay, so I I I agree with you. I I don't believe that we should be taking out the public safety stabilization. I think that's.
Because this is like for accounting.
Items.
And these are accounting.
That's right. This is operational, so.
Yeah.
I'll take a motion for capital to use from general stabilization if that's what the voters approve.
Before we do that, I have a question. Does that?
Yes.
Does that kind of impact FinCon's recommendation? Because I think they. They said general?
Okay, perfect.
Good, good.
All lined up.
So I'll mimic that motion. To fund it from the general stabilization.
On second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
I'll make a motion to uh recommend this um article.
I'll second it. We'll take a vote?
Aye.
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 Alright.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, when was the last time other departments got audited? Do they get audited often or is it a cycle?
So we have annual audits by a CPA firm. And they're in the process of uh twenty-two and twenty-three right now. And going to start, uh finalize in twenty-two and twenty-three. And finalize, and then they'll start their field work of fiscal twenty-four. Uh probably this summer. They start their field work. And it's a general audit of all of the town's finances. And reporting and you can find the audits on the website. There are sixty-plus page reports with. Three sets of books in them, basically, as as they describe. It's very complicated.
Can we just read the explanation of the next one?
Yes. Yes, that.
It's, it's, it's this many pages. So, and I, we already went through it when the planning committee committee came before us. Playing board. So.
I wasn't really gonna read it, but now I'm gonna say, because now I really wanna read it. Now I really wanna read it.
Don't be mean.
Alright, now I'm starting. Article eighteen, zoning bylaw changes floodplain overlay district. And as Jen mentioned, there was a whole bunch of stuff in here, but. To see if the town would vote to amend the Millville zoning bylaw as noted below. There's a whole bunch of stuff here. Here's the explanation.
It's right here.
Yeah, I'm trying to skip past here. Hang on.
It's like three or four pages. Keep going. Keep going.
I know. I know, I've seen it.
There you go.
I've seen it. I'm just getting there.
Our planning board, that's the planning committee.
Hi. The purpose of this article is to continue Millville's compliance with the National Flood Insurance Plan NFIP so that Millville's residents may have continued access to flood insurance options. FEMA has updated regulations and therefore the town must amend its bylaws to remain in compliance. The Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR, assisting reviewing Millville's current floodplain bylaws. And noting uh necessary changes based on the updates to FEMA's regulations.
Can I ask the, our capital? The planning board's member of the capital committee, the planning board recommended this five zero. You already took that vote, right?
Yeah, okay. I just want to get that captured.
Just making sure that we change our laws, our bylaws to accommodate NFIP so that when you do, if you ever have to file. A flood insurance claim. Are eligible to get paid and qualified for insurance. If we don't do that, we may be out of compliance.
So then homeowners could not get their payment, potentially?
Get insurance.
Well, who will get insurance?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they're in a flood zone, which that has changed as it always does.
Yes.
Gets a little bit wider every year.
The rest of it is to protect said floodplains from having modifications done to the waterways. Much like we have now, but this is just, they have to re spell it all.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article eighteen.
Second. Take a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Richard's aye.
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 Alright. Moving along. Article nineteen, adoption of bylaw relating to unclaimed property. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of GL, chapter two hundred A, subsection nine A. Which establishes an alternative procedure for the disposition of abandoned funds held in the custody of the town or take any action. Relative thereto submitted by the treasurer collector, submitted by, yeah, it says twice, submitted by treasurer collector.
Is it town accountant and treasurer collector or just treasurer collector?
Treasurer collector.
Only.
And 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 I would recommend you not read the explanation, but get the Cliff Notes version from our treasurer collector who's here right now.
That is an excellent idea. Come on down. The price is right.
Basically, this is just a formalization of a procedure to un- unclaimed funds. Um, it's used mostly in relation to tailings. Um, I was kind of shocked that we hadn't already adopted this because most municipalities have. If you don't adopt it, you go through the whole process of trying to find the rightful beneficiaries of unclaimed checks. Whether payroll or vendor checks. And then at the end of that, anything that's left, you're supposed to turn over to the state treasurer. The state treasurer's office of unclaimed property division. So by adopting the statute, we actually might have a chance of moving some of this in as general revenue. When it's unclaimed, you have to go through a lot of hoops and stuff, but it just formalizes the process. There's a small chance that it might pertain to the uh tax title properties if we have, say, an owner unknown. Go through the tax title process, which has gotten a lot more involved. Um, and there is nobody to give the excess equity to. It's, the jury's still out on whether this statute would apply to that so that the town could keep the proceeds. So that's all it is. It's good bookkeeping, good procedural things.
Sounds good to me. I'll make a motion to approve Article nineteen as written.
Recommend.
Looking for a second? She says.
Recommend.
Oh, to recommend.
I know you said approve, but it should really be recommend.
Okay.
I will second.
Take a vote, Joe?
Aye.
Richard's aye. Jen?
Aye.
Aye.
And Andrew?
Aye.
Nice. Alright. Alright, Article twenty, amend the town of Millville bylaws, chapter fifteen regarding the library. See if the town will vote to amend the town bylaw, chapter fifteen, library by deleting the first sentence of subsection fifteen dash two. And its entirety inserting in its place custody and management of the public library. Including management of the building and all personal property and equipment, but not including real property. Shall be vested in a board of library trustees consisting of six members residing in the town of Millville at the time of their election or appointment to the board. And further by deleting subsection fifteen dash six. Any building uh acquired for library purposes shall be used solely for the purpose of a library, a public library. Public reading rooms, public lectures, literary or artistic entertainment. Or other activity or purpose as deemed appropriate by the board of trustees in its entirety or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the board of selectmen. The explanation, uh this article allows greater flexibility for the town regarding the requirement of a sole-purpose library building. With the current efforts to repair and reuse the old town hall, there have been discussions about the possibilities of incorporating library operations uh into the facility. Although at the time of this writing, it appears unlikely due to the structural requirements of a library, which are not incorporated uh into the old town hall structure. These bylaw changes will enable some greater options in long-term library facility needs without impairing library trustee authority. Over library operations, policies, procedures and practices.
Very good, and I have their capital, but we actually need not take any action on this, so. Just like the finance committee did not take any action, there's no monetary, there's no capital acquisitions, there's no stabilization, so.
Okay.
I just have us listed there though, just to touch base on that.
So this is basically just in case we come to a point where we want to consolidate buildings, this enables that, correct?
Right.
Okay. I'll make a motion, oh, sorry.
Um, so, but in that case, we already got from the building inspector, but that it's more than. Uh, almost a zero percent chance that we could do that, we could move it into the old town hall.
This just gives us flexibility.
Okay.
It might change, you never know.
That's right.
It might be an analysis, sure.
Fill the basement with concrete?
But there could be another building that comes.
Sure.
Okay.
Like online or something.
Yeah, the other thing is, is like if in the case when we had to move town halls.
Yes.
We had difficulty using the library because it was only sole purpose for libraries, so meetings couldn't be held there, meaning it was even more difficult to kind of schedule. Where they happen. So it allows flexibility for both the library to do and move where it needs to, if it needs to, but also to allow town to. Other town departments to use the library if the need arose.
I'll make a motion to recommend article twenty.
Second.
Andrew?
Aye.
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 I'm aye, Joe?
Aye.
Alright, sorry Jerry, did you have a comment?
I have, this is crazy, I'm curious as to who would make the determination on that.
On what? The?
On on the idea of of the building. Right now, it seems like it's the purview of the board for the library. Do they still have total control over that, or is now that control being abdicated to? An opportunity for the board of selectmen to vote in on that and move that if they needed to. Who has the control over that? Right now, they can't. It's gotta be that single building, correct? So now this seems to be a change. I'm trying to understand the change, if it was in the valley work of one in uh group before. This change is gonna change it to do what?
Well, I think it still stays under the.
Well, I'm that's what I'm asking.
Well, that's what it's intended for.
So it stays under trustees, right? What it does is eliminate the requirement for sole purpose library building. So that, and, but it would still be under the library trustees jurisdiction. So for example, let's just say for Rachel's issue, not just the old town hall, but let's say, uh, the possibility of BMR. Of MES comes back to the town because BMR only needs two schools in the future. So we have a building, maybe all municipal operations move into there, including the library. You know, this allows that possibility. We're not restricted by that. One bo- portion of the bylaw that requires a sole purpose library building.
Why would it have been in there originally? Anybody have any idea why?
Probably a grant.
Yeah. Mentioned a grant.
No, it actually was fifty grand, I think it started it, from what I understood. Fifty thousand was by Bertolozzi. Senator Bertolozzi was the one who got the grant for it. And that fifty grand was the one that started that building. He specifically wanted to put that in there. I'm trying to understand why. In his mentality, why did he want to do that? The only thing I can understand is that he did not want it to be uh taken out of the authority of the people of the board of, on the library. And given to somebody else to hold over, you know, and do what they want with it. That's why my question.
It might, it might have also been the requirement, cause certainly when you get certain grants, you have to have, fulfill fulfill certain requirements of how it's used. And that might have been what it was, but when it was done was.
Yeah, it's.
A long time ago, so that's probably.
Well, yeah, I, no, I looked it up. I looked it up just to to check it out, and that's, that's what I found on it, so.
Yeah.
I was just curious as to, as long as the uh, the board still has control over it. The flexibility of doing with it as to what it needs to be to be whatever it is, uh, so be it. I mean, that, I I I don't think that's a bad, I just wanted to understand who was the one who controls it, that's all.
Get your answer? Well, I'd, I'd say it sits with the library trustee authority still. It just gives flexibility to move the building.
But if the library trustees decided they didn't want to do it, they wouldn't do it. There was the, be no recommendation or no way around them to get the building to do something else with it, correct?
Subject to funding.
Pardon me?
Subject to funding, so.
Well, everything's subject to funding. What I'm asking is, is there a legal way where they could be taking that away from them, that authority or somehow? So that it would go to another body?
I don't anticipate anything hostile happening. I mean.
You'd have to do another vote to take it away from them.
So you'd have to have a town meeting vote to take it away. That's all I wanted to hear. You had a town meeting vote to take that authority away from them, correct? Otherwise, they own that authority, correct? Good enough, thank you.
Alright. Article twenty-one, authorization for board of selectmen to sell a portion of the land adjacent to the former church property at thirteen Lincoln Street to the current licensee. Uh, to see if the town will vote to authorize a transfer from the board or commission presently having care, custody, management and control of certain real estate. Being portions of town-owned property located off Chestnut Hill Road and Lincoln Street. As shown on the sketch plan, which can be sent, oh, sorry, seen at the Millville Town Clerk's Office to the board of selectmen for purposes of disposition. Subject to the requirements of uh general law, chapter thirty B and any other law or requirement um pertaining thereto. Uh, and that the board of selectmen is thereafter authorized to dispose of such real property for a sum of not less than thirty-five thousand dollars. On all such terms and conditions as the board of selectmen may deem to be in the best interest of the town or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the board of selectmen. Uh, this article authorizes the board of selectmen to sell approximately seven thousand square feet of land adjacent to the former Saint Augustine's Church property. Upon which was constructed paved parking and under which is a portion of the former church's septic system, the overoccupied parcel. In the early nineteen nineties, the town had authorized the then board of selectmen to sell a parcel of over thirty thousand square feet to the church. Including the overoccupied parcel. There is no record that the transaction took place. The church did not correct the title deficit, uh, I'm sorry, defect prior to selling the church property to a private entity. The town has entered into a month-to-month license agreement with certain restrictions to allow the new owners. Rights to access and use the parcel if and until ownership can be transferred, subject to town meeting authorization and mutually agreed upon price and terms. So.
So for capital, I'll take a motion to recommend this article.
So moved.
Second, do I hear a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Did we ever figure out the setbacks? Cause there was like a shed and I think there were two sheds and.
Yeah, so that's why they just need this seven thousand square feet to.
But that, from the sketches, that didn't provide any setback. From the property line.
I don't notice.
Cause that's.
Guys have looked at their operations. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
So we saw a sketch of it, we, they showed the overlay map, they showed, but they didn't show the parcel map. But I, I can't say, I can't speak to it, I just know that it was nowhere near any of the borders of the property lines, so. I think we'd still have a pretty significant wedge to the conflict stall.
We would, yes.
No, no, I'm, I'm concerned more with the property itself having.
Building too close to the edge?
Yeah, cause then if they wanted to do anything or change anything, that would be a whole mess of.
They, they would have to apply for permits.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, but I'm saying with, if you're, if you're, don't have enough setbacks, you can't really do much without. Having going through public hearings, special permits and all that, which adds even more procedure to it. So I'm saying if we're gonna.
It's procedure for them though, right?
Well, yeah, but I'm saying, well, it also kind of hits back at us, but I'm saying if we're gonna sell it, we should probably just sell it with the proper setbacks that. Right?
So you wanna change the amount and then?
Well, I don't know what the amount is.
They only asked for their, their engineer and their surveyor only asked for the overoccupied. Seven thousand square foot parcel to license for their use. And from what I understand, they weren't going to do any changes to the actual facility externally, right? They're ju- maybe, they might operate and add equipment and whatnot, but no changes to that. So I think, yes, to the extent they need to go beyond that, they would have to come back for more. Right?
I'm just, did we have the assessors look at it? At any point?
Yeah, they looked at it, but they would just do, you know, their, they, they couldn't tell you the value of that.
No, no, not the value, but the setbacks. That's, that's my.
Their purview, that's really more planning.
And zoning, but so, well, yeah, I'm just.
Anything new going through that property would probably require a special permit, anything.
Okay.
But I think, I think the land they're buying is for to cover a septic system in the area had installed and parking area had paved.
No, yeah, I know, I'm just, cause when, when I remember seeing the sketch, it was like, the line was like right on the edge.
Yes.
So that's what I'm saying, like.
It's all existing stuff, so it's.
Well, yeah, but if they had to do anything, like if your septic needs to get any work done.
Permit process.
Well, yeah, but you'd have to get a special permit because of the setbacks.
We wouldn't have to, obviously.
No, they would, that's.
We're not liable on anything, if that's what you mean.
No, I'm just wondering if it's.
Well, so if we don't put it on this ballot?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying not to put it on the ballot, I'm just looking at whether or not we did the proper thing to sell when we're selling it, like. That way we don't have to have them come back, like a couple of years, come back and say we need more land or something, cause we wanna do X, Y and Z or something like that.
Well, I guess I would put that responsibility on them. This is, they asked for exactly this. So we're giving them exactly what they asked for. If they wanted more for setbacks or anything else, they should have planned better.
Eh, I guess.
Right?
And all this does is give you, the board, authority to sell to them, negotiate and sell. Uh, on a deal that you think is favorable. And, you know, we haven't heard from them, you know, lately anyways, so.
They've been paying their license, whatever that would be.
Yeah. Yeah.
And this thirty-five thousand was just to trigger this warrant article?
Correct.
We really, we really don't, don't know.
You're not limited by that and uh.
Well, you can go up.
One million dollars.
That's right.
What if it's less than this?
I guess you would make that determination at that time, yeah.
Okay, just asking.
Yep.
I'm just kidding, we would not, we would not really suggest a million dollars.
Are we saying it's not less than thirty-five grand Pete?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what we're saying.
We're just trying to trigger the warrant article, I guess.
Understood, but I'm just making sure that it doesn't cut out the twenty-six or something like that. It can't be lower than thirty-five.
Correct.
So there's someone, is there some, Pete, if I may, is there some understanding between them and us that it can't go lower than thirty-five, or is that just our hope?
I'm not sure of the question, say that again.
Okay. You're saying it can't go lower than thirty-five?
That's correct.
Is that the understanding they have as well, or could they come in and say, I give you fifteen for it? Or are they understanding the fact that it's, it can't go under thirty-five?
I don't know.
Well, it can't go under thirty-five until this passes.
Well, we can't sell it even.
And we can't sell it or do anything, so.
So the question remains, the question.
Has to be an informed.
Are they willing to pay for that?
Fifty, but I mean, if it's thirty-five, I'm happy with that too, I'm just wondering, that's all.
We don't know, cause we haven't had any conversations with.
You haven't had any conversations with them, how do you know they're gonna say, hey, I'm gonna get thirty-five?
And they don't get this overoccupied land in their.
So then they can't actually do anything inside the hall, right?
That's right.
That'll preclude any activity by them if they don't accept, right?
That's right.
You kind of got them in a bind, right?
Kind of.
I think, that's why I was kind of hoping the parties had talked to each other, we all gonna agree.
I think that there was discussion around this, but I just, this was like, we were first.
Months ago, yeah.
Yeah, I just don't remember.
So we don't know?
Yeah, I don't remember.
There's been no negotiation of a price, but that's the floor.
This is the threshold to get on the town warrant.
Yeah. To be able to sell it, so that's like what we're buying, what we're limited to. I'll make a motion to uh recommend article twenty-one.
A second. Start with Joe?
Aye.
I'm aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Sounds good. Article twenty-two, capital items, library upgrades. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, a sum of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. For the purpose of repairing the fire alarm system and installing a new carpet at the library or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the library trustees. Uh, this article allows for capital, the capital purchase of bundled needs to affect necessary repairs. The existing fire alarm system originally installed in the library in nineteen eighty-six. When it first opened for a cost of approximately seven thousand dollars and also allows for approximate, for replacement of existing carpeting. From nineteen eighty-six, which is also original building for a cost of approximately seven thousand five hundred. That's a pretty good return on investment.
Eighty-six, I know. It's been there for almost forty years.
Right, so to be consistent as capital, uh, to be consistent with the finance committee, they recommended using capital stabilization fund to fund this. So I take a motion to recommend uh this article using capital stabilization fund.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're five zero on that one, thank you.
You're getting carpeting, maybe.
And was the thought process behind using the general stabilization, it was instead of using it from the?
No, we just recommended capital.
Capitals, yeah, so, so for.
That's earmarked for capital.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to recommend article twenty-two, funding from capital stabilization.
Second.
We'll go with Joe. Joe, take a vote, Joe?
Aye.
I'm aye.
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 Alright. There we have it. Okay. Article twenty-three, capital item, the FW HMS playground. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, a sum of seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. For the purpose of designing, purchasing and installing a playground at FWH Middle School or taking other action uh relative thereto. Submitted by the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. Um, this article appropriates Millville's share of the cost of a new playground to be installed at the Hartnett Middle School. Be available for use by all school grades. Installing this playground will have no impact on any long-term facility plans and configurations of the district.
Okay, so for capital, again, just like the last article, to be consistent with finance committee. Uh, I would take a motion to recommend this article, funding from capital stabilization.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, sir.
So being that, just it's more of a reciprocity question. We're contributing seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars towards a playground of their school.
At the BMR District School.
BMR District School.
That's twenty-four.
And that's our share of. Based on the assessment form.
Yep, I just go back to a certain law of treatment. Where we pay for all of that, I just wanted to say a lot of that.
Thank you.
You are speaking Peter's language, I know, but um, so I guess the question I have, I have a question on this article too, cause the last sentence. Installing this playground have no impact on any long-term facility plans and configuration of the district. How do we know that?
That's what was reported to me by the superintendent when I asked the question.
So in like, any long-term, so in twenty years, this is, you know what I mean, like the, long-term is forever.
Is, is that a binding line right there?
Yeah.
No, it's not binding, that's an explanation provided by the parties.
Cause I don't think you can. Say that.
I agree, but so let's say they're in the two-school solution and the, you know, this is intended for all ages of use. Is the explanation provided. And that it, it, whatever happens with the facility long-term plan, whether it's two schools, three schools or stay with the four. It's reported by the superintendent that this wouldn't be impacted by those plans.
Why isn't that located at any of the elementary schools? The middle school, I assume they don't have recess, so.
No, they do, because it's down to fourth grade now, goes there. It's ki- the elementary's, school is pre-K through three. It's four through seven at the middle school and eight through twelve at the high school.
But wasn't that just because recently the MES problem?
No, it's so, that's a three-school solution, that's gonna be three schools regardless. So be- before, they had pre-K through five at the complex. And then the middle school was six through eight and the high school is nine through twelve. And then that's when they were gonna have, um, originally they had pre-K through two at MES. But then they were able, the complex is really big, so they could just put MES along with the. Um, grades three, four and five all at the complex. So then the new configuration, which enables for three schools, which was started this school year, correct Peter? The fall of twenty-four. Was pre-K through three at, and, and elementary school. Four through seven at the middle school and then eight through twelve at the high school.
So, there's a possibility that JFK could be empty with a brand new playground?
No, so this is the middle school, so.
Alright, okay, gotcha now.
Yeah, so I guess, now that I kind of think it all the way through.
If you think of where they, they're in the middle of the feasibility study, right? And they're recommended from their consultants, when they initiated the feasibility study request, if you will, and MSBA funding. Their, their number one choice was a two-school solution. Now, they might not wind up with that. After this feasibility study, but the two-school solution had this one as the, basically the elementary schools. And, you know, and then the high school was middle school and high school, so.
I guess the middle school will be part of it regardless.
That's correct, that's the point.
Because there's, it's the newest school, so like the, if they were to go to a two-school solution, like I would like investigated the MES. And the Hartnett Middle School, since both those buildings are really new and really nice. And so, that would be the two-school solution, or even if it's, they just.
Middle and high school.
Middle and high school, yeah, so it'll always be the middle school, I guess, so this does have.
It's always in play.
Okay, alright, I feel better.
Play with playgrounds a lot?
Full, fourth and fifth grade are at that, are at the middle school right now, so.
And it's open to the general public. And it's open to the general public.
Eleven.
So did what, did I get a motion and a second?
I'll take a motion to recommend.
Okay. And so we'll take a vote on the capital?
Aye.
Five zero, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
So, uh, I'm still just, oh.
Yep, no, go ahead Rachel.
I'm still just kind of perplexed, I guess, that. So, as far as I'm aware, the situation right now with the grades will remain the same in the future, regardless of MES decision?
Yes.
So, we won't be getting those kids back if that gets approved? The MES water?
So they're voting on Thursday?
For that?
For that.
Because.
No, we won't get the grades back, so it's always gonna be pre-K through three at MES.
And the middle school will be five to.
Four through.
Four through seven.
Seven, yeah.
And I'm just concerned that maybe they'll vote to not put the kids back.
It's a very real possibility.
We're stuck with, you know, it just seems kind of like a weird power dynamic where all the kids are now forced into the Blackstone buildings, and then, you know, and we're, we're planning to put in a playground for that, so that, you know, you know, um, kind of reinforces this idea that all the kids are getting shoved over to Blackstone permanently. Just seems concerning.
Yeah, I can see that, um.
But this article is really playground at the middle school, there are playgrounds at both elementaries in Blackstone and MES already, right? Um, and I think it's consistent with their long-term play of keeping the middle school in, 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 as far as the other issue. You're, yes, it's baffling.
Possible.
Yeah. And, and no matter what happens, the way it's wound up now, there will be Millville students in Hartnett.
Yes.
Yes.
Could, could go all the way down to the lowest grades, could start at four, five, six, so, Millville kids will be there. Millville paying for a portion of the playground. I'm, I'm with you though.
I mean, it just.
Car before the horse.
Yeah.
Couldn't have like a more, I don't know, a mutual agreement to have just a different area for this playground? You know, because if it's open to all students, who's gonna use it more? The people who live in Blackstone who are far closer to it, or the people who live in Millville, you know? Are we really gonna get our money's worth, and are people gonna drive all the way over there with their kids, you know, it, it's just.
No, we already have two playgrounds, when you think about it.
Already, so.
We got the police station one, recently done, right, thanks to grants and.
Kevin Delgessi, great job Kevin.
Well, if we have so many playgrounds, why are we putting in a whole another one?
That's a fair question.
Anything at the middle school, and for the fourth and fifth graders, I think that's the concern. So, because nine and ten-year-olds, like, so, you know, I have a twelve-year-old, and she walks over to MES and plays on that playground all the time. So. She likes it.
Looking for a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to recommend Article twenty-three.
I'll second it. Joe?
Nay.
Uh, I'll be an aye?
Aye.
Nay.
I, I will say that it's a bit disheartening considering we have two playgrounds in Millville that are both under a decade old. Um, that, one of which is not really utilized at all. So nay.
Okay. Article twenty-four, capital item, BMR plow utility truck. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty dollars for the purchase of a plow utility truck for use by the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, or take any other action relative thereto, this is submitted by Blackstone Millville Regional School District. Uh, this article appropriates Millville's share of the cost of a new plow utility truck to replace existing two thousand and four F-six-fifty that is currently in very poor condition, and at the end of its, uh, useful life, the truck being replaced has only been used for winter plowing and sanding at the high school and middle school district-owned facilities. The new truck will have more versatility and utility beyond plowing, and will be used district-wide at all school facilities.
So for capital, again, consistent with the finance committee, I'd recommend, take a motion to recommend this article, um, using capital stabilization funds?
Can I just ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, we're roughly twenty, is it twenty-seven percent of?
We're twenty-four point six five.
Yeah, yeah, this is capital, it might be a slight.
This is gonna be a hundred and twenty thousand dollar truck, I think, yeah.
I can do the math for you.
And, again, this is just a question, but does our school district agreement require us to participate in this capital item?
Yes. Then I will make a motion to recommend Article twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
I had a question, actually, sorry, I was writing something down, um, so. I, I guess I just thought that the towns used equipment to plow the schools.
Right.
But, so no.
So they're not necessarily saying they're gonna plow MES, let's just say, like, the town plows MES, right?
Oh, yeah.
Blackstone plows the complex. They're not saying necessarily that's what they're, that they're gonna use this to plow MES, but it's also gonna be used beyond plowing, so for, you know, grounds maintenance and things like that, so it can be used at MES.
So in an F-six-fifty, sorry, I'm not as familiar with trucks.
Large.
So is it a pickup, but is it a pickup truck, or is it something? Is it like the dump truck thing that we have?
Like a, like a plow truck.
Yeah, but this is really big.
But it, but it has like kind of a dump thing on it, or is it a bed?
Yes, but bigger.
Okay.
It's big boy, it's big.
Okay. So it has a big dump.
Dump trucks. Yeah, I spoke with the dump truck.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So, why, I, I guess I would.
You don't have to vote, I mean, you can vote.
I know, I can vote, I know, I can vote however I want. We have freedom in Millville, um, but I just, I just don't, um, I don't know.
Why doesn't their town?
Yeah, it seems a lot, yeah.
So if we wanted to purchase a vehicle for MES, would we be able to ask them for seventy-five percent of the cost?
It's a capital item.
But you mean, he means to the district, so if we said we need something for MES for the, to support the school district, and it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so we would go to Blackstone and ask them for.
It doesn't work yet.
It has to be done by the school committee.
Oh, it has to be done by the school committee, okay.
They'd be putting it forward.
So we'd have to ask them to ask and put it in the warrant.
But if it were a capital item for MES, the town would be on the hook a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Right? Like, the boiler, the town's on the hook for the boiler.
Oh, yeah, the building.
The roof, the town's on the hook for the roof.
Yeah.
Okay?
Water.
The MES water is operating.
Oh, yeah.
Except for capital items above twenty-five thousand, according to the regional agreement, but we've changed the way we do that.
Okay. I know, it's a lot, okay. I have no more questions.
I'll take a vote.
We won't move out.
Take a vote, we did, did we, we didn't vote? All, all, all in favor, are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
Capital?
Ayes.
Ayes.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your patience, thank you very much.
I would cast my last two votes for the capital, and same way I did for FinCon in favor.
Okay.
Thank you very much, thanks for being here, appreciate it.
All right, looking for a motion?
Uh, I still have some questions, sorry. Um, any questions you want? Uh, like, when we were talking last week, we didn't have a real clear understanding what's happening to the old truck that's being sold, or if it's gonna be kept as a backup.
Well, they'd have to go to auction if they're gonna get rid of it, but, I mean, they have oversight of operations, so they can pretty much kind of do what they want.
But.
But the, the, the finance director of BMR, you asked that question, right? And he, his answer was, probably they would sell it, but it wasn't definitive, is my recollection of his response, right, is that fair? Yes.
The only concern.
Probably, though, what's, uh.
Yeah.
They can do what they want, they can refurbish it probably.
Yeah, it's, what's it worth, it's worth?
Probably worth it.
A few hundred bucks, you know, I mean, on the municipal bid or whatever it is, it's nothing.
But if that got sold, that would, that cash would be.
Offset.
Yeah.
It wouldn't offset directly the capital purchase, but it would be cash into their E and D fund, if you will. Right? It's not, they, they don't match those things the way.
We wouldn't see it.
It would make sense to most people.
Richard, this highway survey, have you, have you happened to have seen this vehicle, is it something, our town could benefit from?
I haven't seen it at all. Yeah.
And so, this is split about one to, like, twenty-five percent to seventy-five percent?
Roughly.
Uh, even though we have one school, yeah, okay. Just making sure.
This is, uh, what, twenty-one years old already?
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah.
Accident waiting to happen.
Probably pretty tired, yeah.
But, uh, as the highway surveyor, this type of truck, would this be in line with what the town would buy for a tr- uh, truck for the entire town?
We wouldn't, because it's, well, probably bigger than what we would use, most of our roads are smaller.
So that, that's kind of what I'm thinking, if you're gonna have a.
This truck would take a ten, eleven-foot, maybe a twelve-foot plow.
If you're gonna be plowing mostly parking lots, do you need a hundred thousand dollar truck?
Well.
That a town wouldn't use for its own roads?
So.
Hundred twenty, thank you.
Well, I, I, I don't know, just kind of playing devil, devil's advocate here, I mean, plowing a lot, I mean, you'd wanna do wide areas, you'd want a big plow there, but they wouldn't necessarily fit on our roads, so this is probably a lot vehicle, just for the lots.
Well, we don't know, because they didn't give us any specs, specifications.
No.
Hundred twenty thousand, though, it must be outrigged with, uh, sanding. You have no idea?
Yeah, it's too vague, I mean.
But I mean, uh.
Well, if it doesn't have a sander, but a six-fifty for a hundred twenty thousand, I'll sell you one.
I, I mean, my concern is, is how much money, like, what's the proper size for a parking, I, I mean, most, just thinking about it, corporate parking lots do not have very big trucks, they have very, they have pickup trucks. Well, no, they hire a pickup truck company, and, and they come with a pickup truck, and that's who it sands and plows. So that's where I'm coming from, and, uh, that doesn't equate to a.
Parking lots typically done by loaders, like, big tractors, with like scoops and snow buckets and things like that, they don't really do pickup trucks.
All the carpet, all the, uh, plow trucks that, at any company I've worked with, that's all they hire. Yeah.
Well, yeah, because you, you probably have tighter spaces and things like that, and you're not really, you don't care about scooping as much snow, but if you have a giant empty lot, and they don't wanna pay the labor for somebody to go out there and make small paths.
But it's not like a giant lot compared to like a mall, I could see like, a lot like that size.
I mean, look how much we paid this year.
Yeah. But it's.
Lot less than what you're paying out for this.
The capital cost, though, would not be offset, though, because it costs a lot more, and then the upkeep is that much more, because it's more specialized. I, I'd be interested.
I, I'm not saying it's a good purchase.
I, I just.
Yeah. Well, I'm not saying it's a good purchase, I mean, you know, there's probably other options.
Well, yeah, I'd be interested in seeing what the study was to come to this conclusion. What?
They're not gonna ask us.
Well, we're not gonna see it, no.
They're not gonna tell us, yeah.
They're just not gonna ask us, just like.
Yeah.
This isn't really up for a vote.
Yeah.
We do or don't.
Yeah.
So if this does not pass in Millville, is this a super town meeting thing?
Arguably, it would go that route, or they might just withdraw it because it didn't get the support of the town.
Because they may see that it's kind of a weird request, if you can just have a regular pickup truck.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think all your, all the questions are very good ones, and they're good ones for the leadership of BMR, but, uh, which will only happen at town meeting floor at this stage, right? I think the other factor in the plowing, though, is if, they want the lots cleared, the schools ready for action early, they don't have a lot of time to deal with that, to get it ready, so.
But how much snow are we gonna be getting, like, long-term, so this truck is, what, almost twenty years old?
Like, in twenty, when, when we had snow again, and we had a hundred and forty inches, next year there was like five.
Yeah, but in the next twenty years, are we expecting to get that much snow? I mean, global warming, I mean, this is, it's that kind of fact.
Global warming actually causes more snow.
Never realized that. You know what, last winter, hey, last winter, I said, we're not getting any ice, and you know what, it just, it happened, I know. I know, how much snow we're gonna get, they should have just listened to me, you know what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just make a comment? And I understand the concern, but for twenty-nine grand, I mean, you're getting a truck that they're gonna need, um, in my opinion, in old four.
Twenty-one years.
It's twenty-one years old, I mean.
Yeah.
We had one here that, you know, the floor was falling out, the kids were falling off the door. I mean, the thing wouldn't turn, the wheels don't, I don't know what condition this is, that should have probably been invested.
Still using that, Jerry.
When you, when you're looking at it old four, that's a pretty old truck, you know?
Good job, good job, highway.
For twenty-nine grand, I mean.
Still doing it.
But if they're planning on using it as a backup, like, what they kind of suggested, or selling it.
I didn't hear that, but I heard them say that they were gonna, they could possibly sell it, but the guy said, I don't think it's gonna be worth over a thousand bucks, was what I heard.
And then he also offered, or could be a backup, but if it, it has the possibility of having that be done with it, I mean, it's not, it may not be in that, that of condition as you describe it, so.
Well, how old?
Twenty-one years old.
Twenty-one years old.
Twenty-one years old.
Okay.
I mean.
And?
Huh?
As long as you keep up with the vehicle.
Well, I, I happen to disagree with you when you're plowing with it, and you could know. Plowing with it is not just keeping up with it, plowing is a whole different animal. Um, you're, you're banging the hell out of that thing, and you've bent the frames and everything on it.
I get that.
Okay, well, then if you do, then you understand, twenty-one years of banging away at the thing is gonna cause the thing to be in poor condition. Probably should have asked that question before they came across it, I'm just saying that, I don't think twenty-nine grand to get a plow to do what we need to have, so the kids can go to school. To me, seems that, might be outrageous, I'm just saying for tw- twenty-nine grand, probably worth it to do it.
Yeah, and, you know, keep in mind, you were putting employees in these things, and, you know, they need to have a somewhat safe working condition.
Yes, on the flip side, yeah, I agree, twenty-nine is short money, but we are looking at over three hundred thousand dollars in debt.
Yeah, so it makes a difference.
And the total cost of the truck is a hundred twenty thousand, which kind of puts it into perspective.
Question should have been, I don't know how much a truck like this costs, I got no idea. Is a hundred and twenty a great deal while we're getting stuck?
Well, to be honest, we weren't present when they did whatever quotes or bidding that they did in this, they probably should have gone out to bid, or look at state pitless.
Again, good questions, don't know.
Uh, I would think, you know, a hundred something, a hundred and twenty thousand, you could get a pretty serious, you know, freight liner or something like that, better quality, but.
My other question here would be, how much use are we gonna get out of it at MES?
None, probably.
Well, that's, that was a bigger question for me to think about, you know, but.
We just hold it. We plow MES.
We, we plow MES, right, we take care of our own.
We take care of our own, so, we're not gonna have any value, all of our kids will have the value when they go.
Yeah, we've got the grass.
But, we're kind of going along with this because it mentions other uses. What other uses could you use such a large vehicle for, other than for plowing?
Well, I think that kind of gets into the operations, and we kind of, I mean.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, is like, it's not like they're building any, it's a lot of mulch.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, Andrew.
But, but that's what I'm saying, like, how versatile, because, I mean, yeah, we have snow, and that's a serious thing, but that's only less than half the year.
So I think, if we're just making a motion to recommend, we can make, like.
Make the motion.
You know, I'll make a motion to recommend, I, I feel like we don't, we haven't been given enough information to really affirm.
Agreed.
Okay. So I will make a motion to recommend Article twenty-four.
I'll second.[1643.28] Andrew?
Nay.
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 I'll be a nay.
Nay.
All right, then, well, we'll see what happens, we'll see what happens.
Capital's too easy, I guess, huh?
Unrelated note, we need.
Well, now, I voted yes on that one and no on that one, so I'm like, I cancel.
Complex person, there, Jay.
That's right.
All right.
I'm like Elizabeth Bennet.
All right, don't let me get the hammer, people, I'll get the hammer. All right, don't wanna happen again. Article twenty five, hey, no laughing. BBT.
Be no fun.
Yeah, right?
It'll be no fun.
A little bit of fun. Establishment of a stabilization account, oh, riveting, to see if the town will vote, uh, persuading to MTL Chapter seventy one, subsection sixteen G and a half, to approve the establishment of a stabilization account for the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District, consistent with the September fourteen twenty twenty three vote of the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District Committee and the member community of Hope Dale, uh, which action will provide additional flexibility with respect to future capital improvements, such account to be expended by a two thirds vote of Regional School District Committee for any purpose for which regional school districts may borrow money, or for such other district purpose as the Massachusetts Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education may approve, or take any action relative thereto. This is submitted by Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District. Um, this article seeks no fiscal appropriation, the creation of a stabilization account is consistent with standard account classification practices. It provides additional flexibility as encouraged by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, the Regional District Treasurer, independent auditors, and the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools Organization. Uh, the establishment of a stabilization account is a common practice across, across the Commonwealth's regional school systems. Appropriations into a stabilization fund serve as a form of capital budgeting, the Regional District School Committee does not have the authority to increase or decrease the amount appropriated for the year in which its, uh, budget has been approved.
So as this is a stabilization account creation, capital has to weigh in, so I'll.
I have some questions.
Yeah, and I do, we'll get to discussion, we'll do the motion, then we'll do discussion, cause I think that's fair, so I'll take a motion to recommend this article for, uh, I'll take a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So, um, cause I, the school district's able to have E and D, and that can't exceed a certain percentage of.
Five percent.
Five percent, so this sort of would get around that requirement, right, you would be able to have five percent and, and stabilization?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Right, and I'll also say that I know that Mendon, on their town meeting, which they had last Friday night, voted against this article.
Okay.
I don't, there were other discussion amongst the various towns involved, some folks waning in that they weren't thrilled about this, I, personally, from where I sit, I don't see any issues with this.
Yeah, so, cause I know our school district asked for a stabilization fund a few years ago, and it was a no.
It was?
Yeah, they don't have one.
It was, okay.
So. And I be on capital planning, and I think, and I spoke with, um, the previous highway surveyors, like, we used to have stabilization accounts for everything, and then we'd fund them a little bit at a time, and then we had to buy something, the money would be there, and I was like, wow, that makes sense.
Back when you had money.
Back when you had money, but, so then when the school one didn't pass, I was like, I don't get it, so, I don't know, I maybe we should revisit one for BMR, cause I think it does make sense, I guess my only concern is that this, this is a way to get around the E and D five percent, and I wonder if that was the concern in Mendon.
Uh, I, I don't know the concerns in Mendon, uh, you know, we have our, we have another member of capital who's got his arm up, so.
So my question is, is this just the town of Millville's stabilization account for BBT, or is it a group of community members?
It's for BBT stabilization account for which they need a certain majority vote of the thirteen communities, and Jerry is our rep.
Right, so we could put the money in, but we'd have no control over spending.
Say what?
We'd be, if we funded the stabilization account, which I'm guessing that would be a future request or something like you, we would have no control over spending, it would be by the thirteen communities. Like, who has control of this, like, for our, for our own town, we control it.
Yeah.
But if we authorize this, we put our name on it, and also, does that require us to make matching contributions like we do for Blackstone?
Okay, all right, so we wouldn't be forced into funding this in any way, okay.
Think Doc, you asked that question the night Dr. Fitzpatrick was here, specifically, and specifically, he told you it would be from grant money and donations. It's not gonna be from your general fund, not gonna be as you recommended, it's gonna be from those two sources. We had, we just got more grants, and we're gonna be over four million dollars in grants this year, we need to put the money somewhere. And what we like to do is say, hey, with that amount of money left over, we got a five hundred thousand dollar grant from an, I can't tell you who. That five hundred thousand, we gotta put it somewhere, and we'd rather put it in this to do things in the future, for capital projects, so we don't end up coming here, which we've never done, to ask for additional money.
To Jason's question though, in terms of, so let's say you've got grants and donations, and you got a million bucks sitting there, and you wanna spend two hundred grand on a plow truck. Will you come to the towns for approval to, to do that, I, I don't know the regional agreement, whether that's a, an authoritative requirement.
We came here before for a plow truck, and you did it, that was anything we ever asked for about eight years, ten years ago.
Yeah, but you know what I'm saying, in other words, or does this give you carte blanche to spend out of that on anything you wish, you don't have to come to the towns, I think is the.
No, I, I, the towns are represented by thirteen members.
Yes.
Those representatives.
Would make the decisions.
Would make the decision based on what it is, if you tell me you don't wanna do it, and I believe it's the right thing to do, and I listen to the other twelve towns I represent, and they all say, don't do it, then I'll vote against it, but that's why you hire us, or not hire us, but allow us to go to those meetings and make those determinations, if you don't like it, get rid of it, get someone else.
Well, just none of that's explained in this, that's all.
And, and that's all I'm trying to do, is make it easier for you, that's all.
It, it says a two thirds majority, right?
Pardon me?
It says two thirds majority to move money, is that correct?
By the committee, correct?
If, if, I didn't see this, is that what it says?
Yeah, at the very bottom of the one page, top of the next page.
Yeah, two thirds for the regional school district committee.
So it's a, it's a, it's a super majority to get it done.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so are we capital ready to vote then, based on this at this stage? Okay?
Yeah, based on those questions, I.
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 I, and Helgy was an I.
Okay. Looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article twenty five.
I'll second it, so I'll jump up. Andrew?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, Joe?
Aye.
There we have it. All right. Article twenty six, amend the town of Millville bylaws, Chapter twenty, personnel. See if the town will vote to amend the town bylaw, Chapter twenty, subsection twenty dash eight D compensation system by replacing the existing classification and compensation plan effective July first twenty twenty four, with the following classification and compensation plan effective July first twenty twenty five as follows, or take any action relative thereto, so I'm not reading all that, but I am skipping over to the explanation. Uh, this article provides, uh, for bylaw updates, the existing classification and compensation plan needed. The updates reflect the most recent plan amounts adjusted for subsequent annual increases, and where budgeted amounts appropriated. Questions, concerns, complaints?
One, why do we have a janitor and custodian position, titles?
I don't know, those are in the bylaws, you'd have to change the bylaws.
I'm just wondering, I'm just like, do we, do we have that much of a need to have those?
That's probably, like, it's just been on the books for.
I, I just looked at that just now, and I'm like, that doesn't, I don't know if that.
We, we have someone that does provide custodial services, right, so.
You have a vendor?
No, it's an employee.
Oh, you have an employee?
Yeah, does that, for, oh, you know, the library in here, and I think the senior center is.
The minimum for a janitor and custodian is the same, but the medium.
Well, yeah, that's where it changes, but I'm just wondering if we wanna probably eventually to clean that up, just cause that doesn't make any.
That's a good idea, yeah.
I don't know if that makes sense to have.
Okay.
Unless we're gonna hire that many more.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article twenty six.
I'll second. Uh, Andrew, I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
Don't say I didn't get you any nice.
All right.
All right, we'll start with Joe.
Go ahead.
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Hey, got you going there for a minute, mix it up a little bit.
Okay.
Like, keep your toes. All right.
But before we do the bu- oh, sorry.
No, no, I'll allow it, continue, you're not getting the hammer this time, I'll give it to you next time, don't worry.
I'm so sorry, I was thinking we should do the free cash, cause that would be helpful to know for the budget.
That, that's a great idea, I was about to say that myself, good job.
No, so, so before we, cause I, I would like to let them go, okay, but I do need them to weigh in on, depending on what's done for Article ten, if some of the funding comes from stabilization accounts, we have to weigh in, right? And the possibilities are twofold, one is general stabilization, to the extent there isn't sufficient free cash to cover that. I would take a, so, um, um, it's gonna be a complicated vote when we get there, so just wait, just, 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 just wait, but the, but the, the other piece though, is that there is, uh, suggestion to use the public safety stabilization fund to offset a portion of the budget, which covers the ALS charges, and in, in my view, I think that's not a wise use, I think the public safety stabilization fund should be used for capital items only, I may differ from others, but that's, that's where I'm at, so I'm looking for a motion that captures where the capital committee is on those two things, which I think the motion is that we're recommending the, the use of capitals, a general stabilization as needed, and not public safety stabilization as needed, cause now I'm asking for the motion, and I just said how I feel about it, so that's how I'm asking.
So I.
More discussion?
Yeah, so, so you don't wanna use public safety stabilization?
No, because I believe that's really deemed for, and best used for capital items, but that's just me, and I respect anybody else's position.
Well, can we just review how much money we have in those accounts right now, just for a ballpark?
Yeah, something like that.
Public safety is around one eighty nine, I think, and the, um, general is like one point one two seven.
Yeah, and capital was, uh, two oh six, but we, you know, we marked a bunch of that, so, uh, yeah, and highways one twenty eight.
General, we got one point one fifty two, capital's hundred and six, highways one twenty eight seven ninety seven, public safety's one eighty seven nine oh nine.
I was so close.
And I heard to fund the ALS, can we, what, what was the question, what, what were we trying to fund with it?
Forty thousand dollar charges for ALS charges from neighboring towns.
And we don't wanna use the stabilization for public service, for public safety, excuse me?
I don't, you made, Jen made, the board made.
Yeah.
Cause I think it's meant for, it, it, we capture fifty percent of the ambulance receipts, put it in the public safety stabilization fund, and typically, it, it's been understood, my understanding, that's for future equipment, you know, vehicle and equipment needs, and this is an operating cost.
We still have trouble calculating what we're bringing in revenue, aren't we?
That's why we have an audit on the awards.
Yeah.
So, you know, so, again, my opinion would be then to not use public safety, only because we're gonna wipe that out. I'd rather use general stabilization funds.
So maybe our motion could be amended, we recommend the use of general stabilization funds for offsetting deficit, but no action on public safety stabilization fund, how's that? Is that?
Well, are we putting, uh, I thought a hundred percent of the ambulance license receipts were now gonna go into public safety, that's not true, no, okay. All right, then I'm good with that recommendation, okay.
Okay, so.
You can reword the motion, I'll second it. I'm gonna try to scroll that down.
Yeah, so, I'll take a motion to recommend the use of general stabilization funds to offset the deficit, but no other stabilization funds to offset the deficit.
So.
I'll second.
I moved to be second.
Okay, so, and I'll take a vote, I'm aye.
I'm aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry, appreciate your, so, I'll take a motion to, uh, close the, uh, adjourn the, uh, capital program committee meeting.
Aye.
All those in favor, aye, aye, thank, thank you so much for coming, you guys are great, really appreciate it.
You guys signed up for, isn't it?
Yes, appreciate it.
So I'll say aye and bye. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, thank you.
You're more than welcome, anytime I can help you, all right, so we're moving on to, uh, Article ten, fiscal year twenty twenty six budget. So, uh, do we wanna call FinCon up, do you think?
They've approved their budget.
You approved their budget?
Yep, this is.
But you wanted to talk about free cash, Jen, did you wanna, or just go to the budget?
I thought it might be a good idea, just to see, like, cause this is what we have.
Yes.
So, so if I'm understanding this.
This is from D O, D O R, said, and, and we have the town accountant here, who, who can help explain it further, but they're, they're requiring a letter, which is right here, signed by the chair of, signed by the town accountant, which is happened, town administrator, which has happened, requires the finance committee chair to sign it, and the chair of the board of selectmen to sign it, which says that the town submitted a free cash calculation of four ninety three, three fifty six, but the DLS, D O R folks can only prove uh, three sixty two, five fifty seven, so this letter agrees to their, uh, the amount that they prove as free cash as of six thirty twenty four.
Summarize that properly? Why's there a difference of a hundred thousand, a hundred thirty thousand?
A hundred and thirty thousand, because last year, uh, we used a hundred thirty six thousand to fund the budget, um, so the way, I guess it was, um, booked, it hit what you, the undesigned fund balance twice, and that's what you use to stock your free cash calculations up. So, it's not ever recommended to use free cash to fund a budget, so it was the first time that we did that as a community, she didn't know how to book it, um.
Before Laura's done.
Yeah, and it, it was hard for, like, nobody knew how to do it, so, because of this, we realized what happened, so now when we u- we use four hundred and thirty six K, I think, last year, or four hundred and thirty?
Yeah, four hundred and thirty eight, seven thirty three.
Yeah, so now we know how to book that, so this won't happen again next year, but, um.
But what about that one thirty, is that like?
That's what, so it's.
It's lost in space?
It's kinda like a rounding, yeah, it, it is, so we'll end up getting it back next year, because of the way it was booked, and it was corrected ended up by twenty five, so we'll end up getting it back.
So we will get it, just.
You will get it, but it's not this year when you.
Great, that's okay, I mean, it's not okay, but at least, I, I just wanna know it wasn't like lost.
No.
No, no.
I would cry.
It was a very tough, uh, situation, so.
You don't need a vote from us, you just need us to sign.
Well, we need, we need the chair to sign, accepting that we're doing it.
But you might wanna vote, have them vote for you to sign this, right? However you want to.
I will make a motion to authorize Richard Brimless as chair of the Board of Selectmen to assign the recognition of free cash letter from the Department of Revenue and Department of Local Services.
Second, and then I have a quick question, so you said it was double booked, where was it, what, what was the offset, where was it?
So, it, she, um, resorted for expenditures, which she shut it on, and then when she booked it, it transferred it out and hit the expenditure control, so it was expenditures and, um, the, um, the revenue, so if you do an expenditure line, you have to do the revenue line, so it hit that, and then it was reserved, so when you do the reserve, it hits that undesigned fund balance, and when you do the expense and the revenue, it hits that too, so in the background, it hits it, so it hit it twice.
Yeah.
It should only hit it once, so last year, our funding was actually lower than it should've been.
By a hundred thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Hundred thirty thousand, seven ninety nine.
Yeah, so our books were off by that much, close of year.
Yeah.
And nobody noticed?
And, yeah, I was gonna say, nobody noticed.
At least they had an eight million dollars.
Well, no, nobody noticed, because it is, this town has never, ever, ever balanced the books, so the two of us are doing that now.
When you, when you say balanced the books, do you mean?
Cash to book.
So what are?
We didn't notice that it was off, and we never, so when it, we used the free ca- free cash amount for the budget last year, to fund the budget. That's never been done before, so we didn't know how, it should've been booked, we didn't, it wasn't booked, it was booked like we would book anything stable, out of stabilization, and it was not booked correctly.
But then when you said, it, we have never balanced booked to actual or booked to cash, that means we don't have an accurate accounting of our system, uh.
Well, we, we just, we just started doing that, so, so that's why it wasn't noticed.
There have been variances for well over a decade, this town has had a lot of mismanagement, it's had fraud, and it's, you know, it's, it's a real mess, and every time we turn around, there's more things that weren't booked correctly. It, it, things just, I mean, look at those, that thing with the forty six Hope Street, where there was actually a recorded document at the Registry of Dees for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a mortgage, it was not booked anywhere. Nope.
Yeah, no, I get that.
I don't think we shoot the messengers.
I'm not, no, I'm not, no, I'm not.
That's what we're trying, that, you're just asking why it was missed, that's why, cause we just have had that, and, you know, you never really had a full time, like Tara wasn't full time.
And Laura and I are still finding things, I mean, the obfuscation that was purposeful with the person who embezzled is still haunting us to this day, I turn around, and I'm like, why was that done, oh, that hides something else, how nice.
Is there supposed to be somebody who checks this, like?
We do, like, so we do the audits.
Yeah.
Which?
Through the audit, that's what we're grinding in.
Right now, it's through twenty three, and you're, they're waiting on forty five grand.
Yeah, which, kinda going to that, though, those audits are appearing to be not even worth the paper that they're printed on, I mean, why are, what are they doing?
So I can, can I make a quick statement, just because I'm also an Uxbridge, and Justin, who created all this mess, we were the biggest hit that he got from there, and part of that was the auditors were under his control. So it was very easy for him to skew what was given to them. And after many hundreds of hours with the inspector general and attorney generals, we, we are all very well aware now of exactly how much control he had, and what shouldn't be happening now.
And, and when you refer to the auditors remaining, the ones that audit us, right?
I don't know who Millville uses, but I can tell you the ones that Uxbridge were using at the time were under his control, because he was the town accountant, and also overseeing the auditing for the town, so he, he was playing his, in his own sandbox, and.
So we have a vendor here that does it, that might've been a town employee?
No, it was a vendor.
Was a vendor?
We, we were using that, an outside vendor, but again, you know, no offense, crap in, crap out, so what he's giving them were fake invoices, were things like that, that were manufactured, they're auditing what they're being given, so.
I would never be that brave to like do that.
There are checks and balances.
He's in jail, so that tells you something.
To catch these things. I mean, when you're working with the auditors, very often they'll say, okay, let's see the history of this transaction. You go back through every single part of the transaction. And it's important to make a very clear, wide paper swat so that you can really see where every penny went. But it's just as easy to, to hide that and obfuscate that so that you don't see it and you end up.
So our, our auditors have come in since.
Yes.
The Cole era. They were hired after, right? We, good new firm after.
That's correct.
The Cole.
And did some catch-up from two thousand eighteen and nineteen. And we too have the IG's office in Adnazium, and you're looking at one of their expert witnesses right here that I think helped put the nail in the coffin.
But would, would you, or either of you, would, would you both say that the errors that are found are from that specific time period and not before that time period?
Oh, yeah. I mean, just recently, I, I had occasion to go back and I was looking through some of the public stabilization fund because one of the issues is when they got rid of the separate remittance fund, everything went into public stabilization. Now, that's a prime example of where something is booked, fifty percent ambulance to general fund, fifty percent ambulance under the department code, and all the money stayed in one account. And it's in the stabilization account, but you can't ever take anything out without a town vote. So that's where, you know, just muddying the waters over and over and over again.
Keep in mind, Jane, what she's talking about is the bank account.
Yes.
And the books are different. And that's where the votes are on public safety stabilization.
I was shocked, though, because I actually went back to the Justin Cole era. I'm missing a lot of twenty twenty-one stuff, which may still be with one of the investigators. I don't know. But I went before that. There were four different ambulance receipt funds and things were moving around like a shell gate. And, and when I was in the private sector, I actually did forensic bookkeeping. I've seen that. I have talked to the police about certain issues that have happened. You can actually make it look like you've reconciled a bank statement and still pull funding out of that.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, I, I look around, I'm, I see it all over the place. And I think that he had put in place a lot of things that he did not have the time to bring to fruition. Or Millville would have been hit a lot harder.
I'm definitely not smart enough to do any of that.
But.
Or like stump it, or, you know, raise it up. It's just.
But they're not, nothing's predating that, is correct, right? Or that we know of, at least, at this point. Okay.
Some of the stuff goes back so far that there's only so many hours in the day. You can't go all the way back to twenty years ago to figure out, oh, gee, when the Title V loans were, you know, when, at the inception of those in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, where they booked correctly. Cause I've already found, you know, normal mistakes where things were supposed to start being billed on, on the amortization schedule a certain year and they didn't for an entire year. You know, among the normal mistakes, it got blown out of proportion when Mr. Cole got his hands on things.
I guess what we're saying is in the future, things are gonna be a lot cleaner and lots like free cash won't take as long, all this stuff.
Yeah. I mean, even, I mean, I was very glad to hear feedback from Tara when I had gotten all the cash things through and she said, wow, revenue has never been as tight as this, that she had seen here. So.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion on the table. We gotta take a vote. Andrew?
Aye.
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
I'm aye.
Aye.
Get a signature. Pressure's on. No peeking.
I didn't even give you a pen to do it.
Okay.
You spelled my name right. I'm impressed.
I'm, it wasn't. I corrected it.
And we need Claudette's signature?
We do if she's.
I'm just waiting for a phone call from Ken.
Okay.
Okay. Alright.
Trying to go through the budget. So actually, earlier I said, Rachel, that you could reduce the BMR lineup. Like, we could do that right now.
Well, we could, but it wouldn't really make a difference.
Yeah, I know.
Cause they already finished their budget. That's what goes. So we could do it.
So you think that we should wait until town meeting if we wanna make any changes?
I mean, there's no. Besides recommending whether or not we support it or not, like, changing it is kind of not gonna do anything. I mean, they can't, even if they agreed with what we were changing, they can't change it at this point. It's already solid.
Okay.
Okay. We hope.
Bless you.
Just reviewing the, the latest budget here.
Yes.
We didn't have any sweeping changes since last time, did we?
Uh, well, the finance committee had their public hearing. They're, they put in a percent and a half COLA. They added in another day on the town clerk's assistant clerk. Um, and there was something else. What was it?
The assistant town clerk's back to two days or one day?
Two days.
Okay.
And what, what else was it, Claudette, that you guys added? I wrote it down. Here, I got it.
So how are we funding?
Fifteen hundred Jerry Finstite. That's right.
So how are we funding the administrator for you?
Is that funded?
Where was it coming from?
So what, what are we asking now?
Remember we had pulled some funding from the assistant town clerk to fund the board of health administrator?
Or the, um, the building inspector.
I'm pretty sure.
Is there, is this?
No, I think it was the town hall admin salaries.
The admin salaries, right.
So they added the money in.
Okay.
So that wasn't reduced. They added seven grand or thereabouts in for that.
Okay.
And the COLA one and a half percent was like sixty-six hundred bucks, if I remember. And fifteen hundred for the, the B V T stipend.
Yeah. Okay.
So those are the only changes since what you last saw, which gets it to a deficit of three twelve, seven sixty-seven or thereabouts, right?
Penny.
And, and the free cash is three sixty-two, five fifty-seven.
So it should cover.
Which would cover that plus the, uh, prior year fiscal, fiscal, the bills of prior year.
Okay.
Okay.
As the only thing, so it's fine. I agree that we should, we can, we shouldn't make any changes now, we can, you know, do on the town floor. But like, when I see people who are against the override and I'm fine with that, it did not pass, fine. But then they're like, well, don't cut my budget. No, I still want my stipend. No, I still want this. That is so hypocritical and I just, I think it's vile. I can't believe people are so selfish that they'd be like, no, I don't want the override, but don't cut my money. Still give me my money. I just, I don't want patience for that. And I think it's really unprincipled and hypocritical.
I will also say on the budget at the finance committee, I did a little bit of talking here and there. Claudette wanted to throw a shoe at me.
She must have thrown a shoe at me, too.
Yeah. But I did, I did speak on behalf.
Your own opinion.
Yes.
No, I mean, I talk too much.
I, I did speak on behalf of the, the, you know, original request that the chief had put in for the communications clerk. Because I thought, you know, that we're operating on a, you know, not permanent, part-time person. It is a job that in the past was funded and I think his request reflected COLA since then, the amount he requested. And it is a position that has a fair amount of exposure and involvement in the town, both from, you know, managing and the, the police station where even your chief is out doing patrols more often than not. So you got daily coverage of an otherwise dark station. The roles are very specific that need to be done and, and in addition, they provided a, um, provided grant support, you know, Trish, in the Trish days, a lot of grants, including the green grant stuff. And also provided administrative services for the fire department. And this is a separate, it's a communications department. It's not, which means it covers police and fire for some of that stuff. So, and Chief, I'm sure can speak more articulately than me about the realities of the situation.
He, he did speak on that last time. And I, I don't think we were looking to make a change in that, but I mean, what?
So I'm just, if he, he's here, if you had questions or he wanted, it's your call.
He made a really good, no, he makes a really good case. I, I get it, but we're really thin on money. So I mean, where are we pulling this from? Even if we could do it. And by the way, this has been filled by a part-timer for three years now.
And I also, I'd certainly like to speak on that because I have other requirements. And just to clarify some stuff I've been hearing, I wouldn't mind speaking again, cause I think all the new topics out there too.
So no, no, I, I, I get it. So I guess the first thing is, is where could we potentially pull this money from?
Well, I would think it's operational. It was originally mine, so I would think it comes out of general stabilization right now.
Well, or free cash, right? You got three twelve or?
Fifty-ish left. And then what are the bills of prior year?
Yeah.
Are fifteen?
And it may very well fail and attempt to do it, but it's only because I had some interest presented to me. And I can't be looking for a job hiring until I know I got money.
Right, right. Makes sense.
So, um, there's like thirty-five grand left in free cash.
Afterwards.
Who determines how the free cash gets used, Beeta?
I'm sorry?
Who determines how the free cash gets used?
The motion makers, which are you guys.
Well, I guess that was part of my question, which is why I was trying to talk through this. I, I wasn't aiming anything at you. I, I was trying to talk through this process. But, so FinCom is, you guys have looked at the budget and you've made a recommendation, right? So that's, so I mean, what are you asking?
I'm not asking anything other than if he's here, he wishes to speak. Um, he'll probably go onto the town meeting floor to ask for the supplement to his budget, and this would be a preview of that.
So, so I, so I get it. He made a really good case. I'm not, I'm not shutting you down, but I'm just saying, where, where did this money come from? I get, I mean, FinCom's already made a decision.
So there's thirty-five thousand left in free cash that could be spent? So there's room there? And then, or, or it could come out of a stabilization account?
But to kind of put a thing on any increases, though, that just lengthens the amount of stretching what little we have.
Yeah.
Right.
So from a standpoint of a budget standpoint, you'd wanna try to limit the pain, the length of the pain as much as possible.
I agree.
And any increases would just do the opposite.
Make it worse. I know.
Cause even, even with the three hundred budget to three hundred thousand dollar deficit, to get that into a balanced budget would take another two years of doing this. You add twenty, thirty more, that then.
So you're basically looking to put twenty-two thousand back in that line, right?
That's what he would request, yes.
Whatever, twenty-two thousand, it's a small change. I think of what, I, I'm sorry, I don't. You were dealing with a situation at the station right before I joined. I don't have my notes with me, but.
No, 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 it's alright. That's why I was aiming at it, Peter. I wasn't putting you in the spot. I'm just saying, if we could do this, what are our options? I, I, I don't know. Kind of feel like this is, makes FinCom's recommendation kind of a moot point cause they've already gone line by line through this. And now after the fact, it's.
Well, it's your, you know, just give me it, but that's all.
I, I really just wanted to, I really just wanted to clarify some issues and I'm gonna speak about this next Monday anyways.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I welcome it. I, I'm just trying to figure out the rules of the game. I, regardless of the, I mean, if we could do it, I'm just saying.
Well, well, even if we did do it, it wouldn't make a difference going to town meeting. It would still be their budget. So even if, so all it would do is just kind of add more things to kind of confuse people, and this budget's probably already confusing enough.
All I would like to say then, if I can speak on this, is what was I supposed to do if I have interest? How do I get this money request granted from you folks on finance committee unless I fight for it? I can't hire somebody on the money we have. And that interest was, you know, came to me. So I needed to get that line item funded again before I could do anything. It's unfortunate that I missed your meeting too, Claudette, but I had a family commitment prior to that. I've been at every meeting, you know? It's just unfortunate.
This has been voted on publicly. This is, this is going to town meeting.
So, yeah. I, I mean, the other thing would be, even if you did have.
Could a special town meeting take care of that in November if, if need be?
So, yes, indeed. It could. Yeah. So he could hire somebody until the funding ran out unless it was replenished at special town meeting, right?
Hire somebody, then lay them off and have to give them unemployment for the rest of that?
That's the thing. I don't wanna be responsible.
He's not gonna do that, you know, that's, it can be done.
For, uh, no.
I think, I think, I think part of our reasoning was because the position was filled, if I remember, the, the meeting and, and the committee talking about it, the finance committee. And it would be adding another, like adding another person, right? Because you're fully staffed in your department, correct?
No.
So it's, it's replacing and expanding an existing role? Yes, it is expanding an existing role.
Assuming that they resigned.
Well, I guess, so who, the person that's in the role, chief, would they, are they okay resigning or?
They didn't resign.
No, he didn't.
Is what we were told.
He didn't.
Okay.
But I also have another issue, which I could use Blaine for simply eight hours a week. If, because we have an increase of other things like firearms-related permitting, uh, checks on that, which all general law and second amendment, we had nine appointments last week for Sergeant Sullivan to handle on one night. So there is a need for some, a little bit of help in there, too. This here is, uh, things that Blaine just can't get done in the potential full-time pay cycle that I just submitted this morning. He did twenty hours over the last two weeks, so potentially forty hours for a full-time person.
Yep.
So we get, we get the important stuff done. Paying the bills, bringing the revenue in, uh, public records. But in the last two weeks of potentially eighty hours for a full-time, we did twenty hours. So this is why I was looking to get this increase and, and hopefully be able to get somebody in that office. More on a full-time basis.
So Andrew, I understand your concern with extending. Like, I get that in this, like, it stinks, the financial position we're in. But I also know that the police department is our only like twenty-four by seven service and like, I don't know. I, I'm not gonna change the budget right now, but I would vote on that twenty thousand dollar increase on the town floor for the police. Cause this is our only twenty-four by seven public safety. And so it's, it's, we need, like, we're already cutting so much. I feel like it's a, almost a safety issue.
So at, at the town meeting, I guess, somebody would have to hold the line, right?
Yes.
And then he would have an opportunity to present.
He can hold the line. He lives in Millville.
Hold the line, so he could hold the line and make a presentation and, and make a motion and took a vote, right?
Yeah.
And, and the other thing that we're kind of glossing over is the fact that even if he does have somebody particular who's asking for it, he would have to go for the advertising of that position.
Yeah, it has to be advertised and, yeah.
I realize that, that's what I'm saying, but that, it's not somebody that I'm interested in. It's somebody that came to us.
I know, but I'm saying you.
So I mean, I've had the, uh, just to clarify, I've had that like out there. And we've had him in a part-time position like two years. So that's not the I solicited.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at it from the optics of it. It wouldn't.
So he would, but you would post it, right, Chief?
Of course.
Well, I guess, but it, it still wouldn't look exactly great.
Considering the amount of public.
Considering that we already know.
So, well, if we.
So.
True.
It's, it's not exactly a great look.
It doesn't look good.
So I don't disagree with that, but I don't, like, based on what this, for forty hours a week and what the annual salary is, I'd be shocked if we get someone more qualified at this price, but maybe we will.
So I don't think there's anything we can do with it tonight. I think we have to wait till the town meeting.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's fine, but.
I just don't know what I could have done differently. I can't blow up somebody's other job. I had to get the funding and I was honest about why I was trying to get the funding that somebody came to us.
I think you did everything you could, just like, and we're like.
I didn't do anything wrong.
You didn't do anything wrong. I don't think, but we're all doing the best we can with our limited budget. Like, the finance committee is doing the best they can.
I don't think that you did anything.
Ultimately, there's just no money. You can't, you can't get water from a walk.
Yeah.
Very good.
That's true.
Bless you, Moses.
So what are we looking for on Article 10 here, Peter? Do you want me to?
Well, I think you're maybe take a vote to recommend the, uh, finance committee's budget as presented. And I think that's where you're at. You're not making any other changes.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion. Oh, sorry. No, please.
I will probably be speaking with DeFalco about looking closer at the B M R S T budget. Cause I feel like one line being three point whatever million dollars and not having a real breakdown for that is super kinda, it's smoky there, you know, cause I wanna.
Visibility that is available for sure.
Yes. Um, and I just wanna say I don't feel comfortable voting that much money, like approving that much money without knowing specifically if that's deserved in certain areas or if, you know, we're giving too much money to certain areas in that budget. So.
There's a version of the budget that we've gotten before and Peter mentioned, so Matt Errenworth, who used to be the.
No, and, and, and Joe said he had details that he would.
You can drill down on it.
Well, can, can he send it to all of us?
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Okay. I would say one thing that I can tell you from the meeting on March second, I think it was, they said they're adding six new teachers. And where, we're cutting everything else, like could you maybe add four?
But how many teachers have been fired recently? That may be a question, cause what if six teachers have been fired and now they're just hiring six more teachers?
No, this was six new adds.
Impression it was expansion as well, based on the meeting.
But I think it's overall concern of are the kids actually getting quality education here? That's for starters. So, like if we're paying for all this, our students better be getting great scores. Or at least being to standards for our state. And the classroom should be up to snuff and, I don't know, are we seeing that? Haven't been, been there in four years, but I don't know, things can change.
I don't know the situation, but I know student to teacher ratio is, you have to have so many teachers. So I don't know how that, I don't know the old degrees, but I know the young degrees.
Yeah.
Um. Depending on enrollment.
But also in here, there's like budget increases over the past ten years for like administration that have gone up a consider amount, considerable amount compared to like the teachers themselves. And that seems kinda interesting, um, that we're not putting our teachers first, but I digress on that. Um, I just think this needs to be looked into more, especially with different concerns of like, well, why is uh, the elementary school here being, why are our kids not in that? That's a good example. And then we have, we just dealt with the truck, for the plow truck. Is that gonna be really used by us or is it just mostly for them? You know, these are, these are concerns I have, so.
So you need a motion to?
I, I think you're recommending this budget with the deficit of three twelve, seven sixty-seven, right?
Seven sixty-seven.
As adopted by or recommended by finance committee. Unless you have different amounts and you're not, doesn't sound like you're changing anything tonight. And only changes what happened on town meeting floor.
Right.
Or new information like, uh, Tri Valley or, uh, you know, the other, which, which I have follow-ups to, but I got nothing new.
So I'll make a motion to recommend Article ten as written.
I'll second it. Take a vote, Andrew. Want me to skip you?
No, um, I'll. Begrudgingly, I, I'll say.
Nay.
That's a first.
Nay.
I know.
Aye.
Solidarity, solidarity.
Let's go.
You were a yea or?
I voted nay this time, I knew you were aye.
Looks like we're a.
Three, two.
Three, two, yeah, yeah.
All right. Three to two.
Right, were you an a or?
I was a nay.
You were a nay.
So it was a, it was a two-three.
Two-three.
Two, two.
I was nay.
You were nay. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's two-three.
Gee, Jen.
Yeah, you switch it up. What, what are you doing? You getting, you getting feisty over there?
Yes.
Hey, thanks for clarifying. What's going on?
Cause I, I want the police chief to have his money.
Do you need a Snickers?
Oh, that's why.
I want the police chief to have his money.
There you go.
Good for you.
Now I understand.
And not you when you're hungry, you know?
So, I'm never me.
I'm gonna leave this with her or you? You want?
Yep.
All right. Okay, thanks.
We've got our opposites stay out of the year. It's a one vote.
Such a tough job.
All right, Peter, where are we at?
I don't know.
Addition of a recommendation, vote on budget, we did that.
Did that, you're all good.
This is the proper way to get it into line.
And B and A, and I don't know of any other town meeting planning that needs to take place.
Old business, uh, town meeting plan, anyone discussing?
Right, so you're good there, right?
Unless we're cutting by three hundred thousand.
Free cash. So, then we're down to old business, M E S water status update. Um, so in your package, you'll see there's a letter from, uh, Mary Jude Pigsley. And there's also, uh, PFAS Treatment System Project Timeline. So I'm gonna be sharing those with Dr. DeFalco, so they'll have these two items. It's towards the back of your packet, it should be. Um, for their meeting Thursday night where I plan to attend, I think Jen's going to attend.
Yep, I'm gonna go. You're gonna go too, Peter?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And, uh, six o'clock. And, and, and separately not on there, but, uh, between now and May tenth, I must uh, submit a, uh, notice to the school folks for non-compliance in the first quarter, so just highlighting that.
Water tasting.
Cause, um, so that's gonna go out and I have the draft from D E P. I just got a review. Uh, edit and issue, um, before the, I'll, I'll, I'll do that before their meeting. So they also have that information. I did, we did, Jen and I did meet with McClure Engineering last week. Uh, their test results reas- more recently are in compliance.
Yeah.
Uh, and they're coming to the meeting, uh, with, in front of the school to talk about the project and the timeline. And what's going on there and the challenges. So I think they'll be able to provide good scientific factual data from which people can make, uh, wise decisions on whether to move the kids back or not. And as you know, the board had previously voted to provide bottled water for next year while the, the pro pilot's going, so.
Full year.
There's, there's no, there's nothing in this information that says the, there's a reason not to go there because of water.
Yeah.
Quality.
Makes sense.
And on this schedule, we did ask the question specifically, this is a conservative estimate on the schedule. So they, so for example, like if you look at grant approval for invoicing upon receipt of contract. So that's, she put that to happen all of May, but there's already back and forth. I know that Jane has been contacted on a few things with the treasurer. So like that could, if that's finished like March, say May, I'm making this up, twentieth, that takes eleven days off the schedule and brings it in eleven days. So, for, in terms of getting the order of the equipment, like they have someone who has it. They're just waiting for us to order it, so that's gonna be fast too. So there's a lot of things in here which should compress the schedule, which is great. And then my, the real goal, I just wanted the equipment, um, installed like before school started. So there'd be no disruption to the kids, so it's functioning and they have it right now going in by July thirty-first, so. And it's conservative, so assuming that it's, you know, maybe it'll be
Sooner.
June thirtieth, but, you know, even if something ha- like happens, there's still a month of wiggle room.
When's their vote?
It's on Thursday.
Thursday night.
Okay.
Is that, so I'm gonna go and Peter's gonna go. Is anyone else, should we post a meeting? No one's obligated to go and I think Peter and I with McClure can handle it, but I didn't, I don't wanna discourage anyone from not attending. You certainly, I think it'll be good to kind of show how important this is to us. Sure. So it's two.
I'll, I'll stay home and eat dinner.
Okay, perfect.
I'm coming over afterwards for dinner. Leftovers.
I haven't decided what to cook yet.
Maybe post it, can you post on the?
I will post something just in case of.
And then I'll let, uh, the chairman know that we may or may not have a quorum. That's Thursday.
Joe, where you going?
Yep.
Uh, I don't know.
I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just asking if she's trying to.
Yeah, I, I have.
Okay, don't worry. If, if you ca- if it's just the three of us, that's fine.
I have dinner, so.
So don't worry.
I understand.
Pretty important.
Don't worry.
Not sure what a meeting.
And I think this letter from Mary Jude is especially helpful to kind of reiterate again.
Looks good.
Yeah, okay.
That hit the spot.
Okay.
So on the agenda in Part B.
Yeah.
Uh, turns out I misunderstood what was going on. I was actually excited because it says consideration of designation of selectmen Gil as M E S Public Water Supply Owner.
Nope.
Which is what I am.
Right, you are the young.
I'm the legal.
Right.
Picture me behind bars. They threaten that on every other one of these.
That will not be me.
Notice it. So I think it's liaison is really what she's looking.
Really what I wanted to say and just, um, because when I was the chair, it didn't really like matter if I not, that didn't matter, but like as the chair, I get, I have more authority. Now you have all that authority, Richard. You're very powerful.
Well, you better believe it, I have a hammer.
So I just like to be officially put as the M E S, um, water program liaison.
Do we need an expiration date or we just, uh?
Well, it'll expire when.
Yeah, just until.
So just make a motion, uh, to appoint Selectman Gill as the M A, M E S Water Supply Liaison.
For the Board of Selectmen.
For the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Okay, well, take a vote, Joe?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
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 There you go. You're it.
See, now I'm very powerful with water.
You're very powerful with that water. Can't wait to try that, uh, new, uh, pink.
That, um, Goldie had July thirty-first and I, I hope we hit it. Um, are we required to do the four-quarter things again before they bless the water and say it's good?
So actually they'll let them, if the water is passing, they'll, and once they lift the bottled water requirement, even if it's before this one year of testing. They'll let the kids drink the water. We asked that of the McClure team.
Okay, that's, that's an important thing. I mean, I mean, if we gotta wait four quarters again, it's like, oh, smoke, here we go again.
The year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so indeed, you're saying if we go through one quarter and they come back and they say, hey, this is good holy water, let's drink it.
Yep.
Then we're good to go. We can go ahead.
Yeah, so the notices are based on a rolling, uh, four quarters of rolling average, okay, basically. So depends on the averages, as they average out. It could be, it could be all cleared up in this current quarter or it might take two quarters. It won't take four quarters necessarily, cause the average that we're dealing with is not particularly high, whereas in times past, it was high.
Right, when you put the new system in, you're gonna come up with a different reading, cause the system's supposed to take
Yeah.
So once that comes out, I'm saying that thirteen-week period, if they pass that.
Yeah.
Do we still have to go the other second, third and fourth quarter to get a readout?
Depends on the averages. The average has to be below M C L of sixty and eighty, depending on which one of them.
No, I, I stand with that.
Okay.
But they could drink the water during the pilot program if the, if the number is below, but in case any parent, teacher or faculty member is concerned. We've already voted to provide bottled water for all of next year.
No, I think that's the best thing you do is provide that, cause that's a good edge against it.
Yeah.
I was just concerned whether you needed the four quarters of a reading to finally say, we're done with the bottled water, the water's good, everybody's happy.
Yeah. If, if, maybe, maybe, we have to see what the math comes out, cause I think we had one quarter that was, they've actually all been just slightly over. Like sixty-four and like eighty-two currently, yeah.
The new process, my assumption is they're gonna drop way below.
Yeah.
Fine, right?
And the determination of the bottled water requirement is arguably a bit arbitrary, based on Mary Jude Pigsley's determination.
Yeah.
And she had said if you did three quarters, she would commit to lifting the bottled water.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That's what I wanted to hear. She'll commit to three quarters.
She did previously. What she'll do now, you know, could change. We don't know, and she's away for a bit.
Yeah.
We'll find out.
It was three quarters before. She said if we had three quarters in a row below.
Yeah, and we.
Cause we had two and then we had one. The third one was.
That were not, right?
Yes.
That killed us right there.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so, uh, you're the liaison. Congratulations.
I appreciate the support.
I'm gonna get you a crown, okay?
I have a crown.
Oh, you should be wearing it.
Of course you do.
All right.
I do.
Settle down, we got the hammer. All right. Number five departments.
Nothing.
Anything?
Nothing.
Anything exciting now? Okay. Public forum? Quiet down, that's enough.
Anything new on, uh, on the new, the school process up at the high school? What's going on, anything?
Nothing new. Still feasibility studies. I was unable to attend the last meeting, um, so I gotta catch up with that. But I heard nothing new. There's another reading coming up, uh, end of May. I'd have to get back to you with the date.
Do we have a ballpark price on that building?
I heard a hundred fifty million.
Hundred and thirty.
I was gonna say two hundred, but okay.
Million? That was the last one. Cause I think Dan Keith told us when fifty million was the last.
Oh, it's going down, so that's good.
Oh, so you heard a hundred and thirty million last time, okay.
Back in March, I heard a hundred and thirty million.
Oh, he told us at the April.
Oh, April, meaning he said one fifty. See, I didn't miss, that's what I missed.
Your problem is that the.
Inflation.
Yeah, it's killing us. I mean, this thing started out like a buck ten, buck twenty.
Yeah.
It, it, it just keeps sliding up. And I mean, the thing is, you can't stop it and they're talking seven, eight percent per year.
Yeah.
Before you stick the spade in the ground.
And this is through two, three years away? I mean, I don't want.
That's, that's, that's the problem.
I don't want to talk.
You're absolutely right, yeah.
Big number. Okay. Anybody else? Good? No? All right. Announcements?
Nothing to.
Correspondence?
Nothing. Nothing.
No minutes?
No.
Selectment reports? Anybody? All right, I like it. Keep it up. Town administrator report?
Nothing.
Good. Keep that up too.